So, we have a public hearing on an application for formal review of the Village on Technology Hill Planned Unit Development PUD Master Plan. Londonderry Holdings LLC is the owner and applicant. Map twenty-eight, lot thirty-one dash six, twenty-nine dash two, map seventeen, lots two, five dash three, five dash four, and five dash five. Alright, um, I am looking for a motion on completeness.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept the application as complete as outlined in staff's recommendation memorandum dated April tenth, twenty twenty-four.
And I'll take a second?
Oh, second, Mr. Chair.
Alright, I have a motion by Lynn, second by Art, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions, and the chair votes in the affirmative, and the motion passes seven to zero. Alright.
And note the sixty-five day timeframe, and the public hearing starts.
Your public hearings process has started, as well as the sixty-five day time frame for the board to render a decision. Alright, gentlemen, hello.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, good evening, members of the board. My name's Dick Anegnost, I'm the co-developer of The Village on Technology Hill, which is the project before you tonight. Also with me tonight are Ken and Grace Solinsky, the primary developers and landowners. Our engineer Nick Golin from TF Moran, Jamie Neef from Stone River Architects, and Kevin Smith, our development consultant. All at your disposal for potential questions that you may have. By way of background, I'd like to just give you a one-minute history lesson on the site itself and our involvement in it. Ken and Grace founded Insight Technologies, which you may know, located in Londonderry since nineteen eighty-eight, essentially on the parcel in front of the one we're discussing tonight. My involvement with them came back in nineteen eighty-nine or ninety, when Evans Technology Park, which is the Akira Way subdivision, industrial subdivision, was the very first industrial subdivision I ever developed. Um, they grew the company to over eleven hundred employees and developed it and built the Insight Technology buildings in that subdivision. Um, they ultimately sold the company to L Three Harris, who still remains there today in two thousand and ten. So therefore, between them and myself, we have a really good working knowledge of the area and the parcels that we're developing. A couple other landmark projects that you might know that I've built in Londonderry or developed is the Elliot Health System on Budrick Road and the EFI Electronics Imaging on Pettingill Road. The Village at Technology Hill is located essentially off Kitty Hawk Landing in Akira Way. It consists of currently seven parcels, which will be consolidated into approximately plus or minus a hundred and ten acres, which meets the PUD requirement, which is why we're before you tonight. Um, we've laid it out and designed it in a village concept, which essentially, the definition of a village concept is live, work, play. Okay, you have jobs, you have industry, you have services, you have residential, all co-located within the same, um, large parcel that we're proposing. Upon approval of the PUD, we would be prepared to move forward with consolidation and site plan review immediately. Um, I know that you're all familiar, because you were talking about Woodmont Common earlier, and it's been around for a long time. So Woodmont Commons is the other PUD that you're probably most familiar with. But although we would share PUD status, um, we're definitely a project of a different nature. Woodmont, first of all, we're much smaller than Woodmont Commons. Second of all, we have identified and located on the site all of our potential uses. So what you're gonna see during site plan and what you're gonna see tonight is all of the uses that we're proposing. We've identified them upfront, we've located them on the site where they're going to be on a permanent basis. There'll be no reason to come back before the board, except potentially for minor site plan issues for a couple of the buildings that won't be built initially and are being preserved for, um, for future phases of development. Because we're going to be developing so much of the site initially, all of the infrastructure, all of the drainage, all of the roadways, and all of the amenity improvements will be installed all at one time upfront, while, during and while the buildings are being built. A large portion of the industrial space, which is another unique thing from Woodmont Commons, is going to be, um, occupied by Envision Technology, one of Ken and Grace's latest business ventures. The site also will include a small office building, which will house their family office, and a building for On Point Systems, which is another company that they founded. So, we have the tenants upfront that will be major, occupying the majority of the space. Envision Technology is a really innovative company. It's focused on developing and producing electro-optical systems, which helps their customers detect, see, and locate their targets. This is clean manufacturing, there are no major chemical deliveries, there is no smoke coming out of smokestacks. This is good, clean manufacturing that we're proposing here. The facility will employ up to thirteen hundred at full capacity, which will create essentially eleven hundred new jobs that will be brought into the London, Londonderry. The second component of the village is the residential component. It comprises four hundred and thirty-nine housing units, spread over nine buildings. The largest challenge, which I'm sure you're all aware of, because Londonderry is suffering, and just like all the other areas of New Hampshire, is facing employers, is attracting and hiring, um, workers. And that's difficult because of the lack of housing available to the workers. Our thought here is that primarily, we will be servicing our own, um, crews, our own executives, our own employees with the housing. So, as part of the manufacturing process and our hiring process, we'll be offering housing to go along with it. There's very little housing, as you guys know, in the northern part of Londonderry. So therefore, by having it available, it moves right into that live, work, play status that I talked about earlier. This will significantly increase the labor pool from which we can draw from, but it also attract labor pool to the neighborhood for our neighbors as well. Historically, village concepts are not new, okay? The mills in Manchester are a village concept, the mill in Londonderry is a village concept. It always started historically with a manufacturer or a business establishing itself, and then its workers building housing all around it in order to supply the workforce. So essentially, we're just going back in time and reviving a concept that successfully worked for centuries. The housing is going to be a mixture, so therefore, we can accommodate engineers, line item, line employees, as well as our executives. The next largest challenge facing employees and our ability to hire them, and this again, I'm sure is well-known in Londonderry as well, is the lack of childcare availability. The third facet of our village concept is we will be providing a ninety-two-hundred-square-foot childcare building to provide childcare for our employees and for our residents onsite. And then lastly, in order to, um, mitigate or minimize the number of trips that need to be made to and from the site for various minor necessities, we're proposing a fifteen-thousand-square-foot commercial building. And in that commercial building, we are looking at somewhat, which we historically characterized as neighborhood retail. So a small general store, a place that you can pick up things that you need, a breakfast, lunch place, so that you could get your coffee before you went to work and those kinds of things. So it'll carry a wide variety of convenience items and product lines. You know, there might be a hair salon or a barber there, or a small gym, or those types of uses that would complement and allow that, for their services to be provided to the, um, employees in that area of both our buildings and, uh, the other, our abutters, as well as our, um, apartment dwellers. Um, we've conducted a fiscal impact study, which we submitted to the town already as part of our site plan development, um, the results of which are very positive, and we are very tax favorable to the town as an overall project. You know, overall, our services won't just, and what we've just presented, he won't just service us. But there's a number of other large employers in the direct area, there's L Three Harris, Inselectro, Kubert Lubrication, Wire Belt, NS One, Ad Mix. You know, there's other employers on Kitty Hawk and Harvey Road, Ricker Avenue, Tinker Avenue, and Abbey Road, that would all have direct access to everything that we're proposing here tonight. So without further ado, I've brought you enough with an introduction, I'll turn it over to the guy that really has the details. Go ahead, Nick.
Nick, before you get going, I just want to ask staff if they have any input on anything they've heard so far.
I'm good.
Mr. Chair, I thought it might be helpful to both the public and the board if I could just say a few comments about just PUD process in general.
Sure.
So, I created a small chart to show kind of how we got to where we are today, but essentially, we're here, we're at the public hearing stage. So we've determined that the PUD is complete, meaning it's meeting the minimum requirements of a hundred contiguous acres. They've provided, um, the associated documentation per the PUD section of the Londonderry zoning ordinance. And so again, we're at the first public hearing stage to have the board go through the process of potentially approving the PUD master plan document. The PUD master plan document is the regulatory framework for the forthcoming site plans associated with this master plan. So the applicant cannot proceed with a formal site plan submission, for example, as it relates to the residential piece of the project, until this document has been approved by the planning board. Because again, that is the regulatory document that the applicant needs to utilize, and staffing needs to utilize to conduct a proper review. So, the purpose of tonight will be to start the process of going through and reviewing the waivers and modifications that the applicant has brought forward, that you'll see, um, outlined in the staff memorandum, and beginning those discussions, and having it back and forth with the applicant, as well as hearing from the public. So that's the intention and purpose of tonight's hearing, and if I can answer any other questions along the way, I'm happy to do so.
Thank you. Anything from the board before we keep moving?
I have one. So I, I thought I heard that, I thought I heard said that, that they would not have to come back here for any other reason once the PUD was approved, but that's not necessarily true, is it?
I'm not exactly sure what you said verbatim, uh, but
Do you remember what you said?
I think, I think what, if I heard you right, it was that we'll go through the process of establishing the PUD master plan. Then the applicant will still have to come back for a hearing process for the associated site plans.
Right, so all the site plans still have to come back here?
Correct, but there are portions of the site plans, for example, some of the manufacturing buildings that are phased, or that have elements that aren't set in stone yet, that they may need to come back to the board for, for minor view. I think the purpose of that comment was to point out the difference between Woodmont and this PUD, meaning they have everything almost a hundred percent established, with the exception of a couple of buildings that they may have to come back for. So in other words, you'll be seeing Technology Hill site plans somewhat consecutively, and please chime in if I'm misinterpreting what you said, but
More articulate than I could have characterized it.
Yeah, I thought that was the case, I just wanted to clear that up in case someone listening here in the stratosphere mistook what was said, similar to the way I did, because I was convinced that they need to come back here.
So after we establish the PUD master document, we will continue to have public hearings on any associated site plan with the PUD.
Thank you for the clarification, thank you.
Thank you.
That's good.
Anybody else?
Uh, the fiscal impact analysis report, when was that submitted?
Um, it was just submitted for review by staff. Um, it hasn't been, or has it been?
I have reviewed it, if the board has further questions or needs additional documentation, tonight would be the appropriate venue to begin those questions and discussions.
Okay, would it be available for the board to review?
It's in your, um,
Oh, okay, I haven't got that far yet, so I apologize, so, thank you.
Fantastic. Alright, Nick?
Take it away, I'll get a microphone here. Kelly, do you happen to have the overall PUD graphic? If not, I do have a flash drive that has it on it otherwise.
Um, I think so.
And that is, do you need to know what page it's on?
Yeah. Yeah, I got it, I got it.
Got it? Alright, perfect. Alright, well, good evening, folks. I'm extremely excited to be here to talk about this project. We're not quite at the culmination here of it, but we have been working on this project for a considerable amount of time. Um, I want to thank John and Kelly for their time and help guiding us through this process to make sure that we had an appropriate understanding of what a PUD meant and how best to orchestrate our submittals. So, as Dick mentioned at the opening here, there were certain project objectives. Um, this is an industrial mixed-use, uh, project, with key components being the ability to walk to work, creating well-paying, highly technical jobs. Clean manufacturing was the terminology that was, was used early, these are very technical jobs.
Hey, could you stop that, please? Excuse me, folks? I'm sorry. Folks, if you want to talk, can you just step out for a minute, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, other critically important elements of this project were maximizing greens, green space, and minimizing our environmental impacts. Um, I think it's really important to note, although this is a hundred and ten acre development, we have forty acres, forty acres of this project that will remain there in our existing, naturally occurring condition. Um, that is a, that is evidence of the developer's intent, really to try and make as cohesive a development as possible, um, so that can fit as best within the constraints of its surrounding as possible. Um, other important elements were creating those recreational opportunities. You'll see there's an abundance of open space, uh, which I'll make sure I address as part of our presentation tonight. And really, creating what would be a sustaining, sustainable community. Um, we'll talk about the various elements, uh, Dick did a nice job to give us the preface as to, yes, we have a retail area to better support, um, our employers, our employees, providing the opportunity for, uh, appropriate, nice housing in immediate vicinity, uh, to these workplaces. Uh, it's just a tremendous advantage. And what we can see when we look at our overall planned unit development map here is really the overall locations of these, these elements. Uh, I think it's important to point out just a little bit of this existing lot in itself, and what brought this project together. You know, the overall site location relative to surroundings, this is the north side of Londonderry, uh, east of the airport and west of Route one twenty-eight. We're sandwiched right in between Akira Way and Kitty Hawk Landing. Uh, Akira Way being to the north, and Kitty Hawk Landing to the south, providing two appropriate points of access and egress, uh, to the overall project site. Noting that the layout of the overall facility and the roadways provides the opportunity to separate our trucking and more industrial use traffic from our residential components, uh, which again, it's a mixed-use development, but doesn't mean things need to be right on top of each other. It means that we need to design this so it's cohesive, and that, so these elements can work together. Um, relative to the underlying zoning district, it's important to at least make sure we note that this is industrial one, industrial two, commercial two, and agricultural residential. So much like our project, our underlying zoning districts, um, also have an abundance of options. Uh, Dick mentioned in his opening that there are seven lots that'll be consolidated in order to accommodate the hundred and ten acres overall for this project site. Um, just from a, uh, just overall discussion point of the existing site features, um, you'll notice from our plan, there's some, some grayed-out areas, which represent our proposed impervious, but you also note some lighter graded areas that are also an off-color of green, those are some existing wetlands. Um, those wetlands, um, exist in multitude and several locations, so it really became a difficult design topic as to how best to cite our uses to minimize our environmental impacts. Um, there's also over a hundred and twenty feet of grade change, working from the east side of the site, where the proposed Envision one sixty building will be, to the westerlymost point where we have our residential units. This again helped drive how this site would be designed, noting that we have to have the appropriate runout on those roads to provide, um, grade transitions that are appropriate. Um, also dealing with, um, providing appropriate stormwater management facilities and separation from estimated seasonal high groundwater, really allowing Mother Nature to dictate where those elements would need to be placed. So, overall, talking about the different land use areas, I'll give us at least an overview. Uh, that first land use area is our village area one. Um, this area is intended to be the gateway to the development and contains our commercial uses. Um, these commercial uses really address the daily needs of our residents and the employees of the village. Um, so as we come in off of Akira Way, directly, uh, to the left side of the drawing would be the retail area. Um, again, as Dick mentioned, this is a, this is a general retail, maybe it's a sandwich shop. Uh, this provides, uh, maybe a hair salon, um, just various uses that allow the folks that live here to take a walk, to go take care of what they need to, versus hopping in their car. Um, that's very much an important component of this project, in that it provides us the opportunity to take vehicles off the road, um, and promote really more of an ecological effect when it comes to this overall development. Directly across from our access road is our childcare area. Um, again, these two uses have been very much strategically located adjacent to Akira Way. Um, provides the opportunity for those areas to be used not only by, uh, the individuals who live in our development, but for folks who live outside of it. And also provides the opportunity for them to use those businesses without coming to the interior of the development. They don't need to drive through the residential area, they don't need to drive through the manufacturing areas in order to best utilize those services. Um, our second area, uh, as we work our way south, uh, there will be a slightly cambered bridge that we'll cross. That is an element that has been provided both for aesthetic, but also for environmental reasons, and that it allows us to avoid any wetland impacts of the existing wetland channel, um, that is in that, that location. Uh, that elevated bridge provides the opportunity for critter crossings as well. Uh, that was one item that in meeting with your conservation commission in reviewing, uh, this project, was definitely identified as a very important factor, that this is a critter corridor, and we need to make sure that we provide the ability for that interconnection. Relative to that residential, which is the next portion as we cross the overall bridge, what you'll find is this is essentially a concentric ellipsoid formation enabled by the internal roadway configuration. Essentially, we have a high loop, and we have a low loop, and it allows us to better play off the existing topogory of the site, as well as make use of the existing resources, resources that we have, i.e. ledge, to make use of that on the site for our road selects. The other thing that it does, which we're particularly proud of, is it creates this beautiful center green. Um, we're not just talking about this being, um, a development, this is really a village under itself. So it provides great common space, um, both passive and active, uh, within that area, or all of the community, uh, within this area to be able to use. As we work our way from the west to the east, uh, you can see there's a little bit of a transition, where we go from our, our residential buildings into some areas that are more strategically laid out for parking lots and our industrial uses. To the south, uh, we have our On Point Building and the Envision Technology Building. Um, the expectation is Envision continues to grow, they'll be able to grow out of that space and provide other supplemental uses when they move into their larger building, which is in the northeast quadrant. Um, that building has been designed for their future needs, as well as additional expansion that would allow them to cantilever out over the parking lot that would be used during initial phases of the project. Um, there is also an additional manufacturing use located in the northeast quadrant. Um, when Dick mentioned that there's a little bit of a unwritten element to this project, it's essentially that building, um, how that building eventually comes to maturation, uh, we're working through. But the expectation is that would be a building that would provide really a sister use, um, to the other compatible uses that already exist onsite.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Which building is that, the one in the northwest, northeast corner?
Yep, so the very
Or the one on the east side?
Very top of the page.
Okay, thank you.
Right there. Twenty thousand square feet.
Yep, so it's identified as a twenty thousand square foot manufacturing use. How exactly, how exactly that plays out will, uh, feder out as part of the site plan approval process, as well as the environmental permitting that'll be associated with the project.
Thank you.
Very good. And last but not least, we have the Solinsky Foundation Building. So this provides Ken and Grace really a home base for their office use, um, to continue with their philanthropic needs. Kind of the crow's nest to look out over the development as well, make sure everything's running as smoothly as possible. Um, overall, when we look at it, we have nearly four hundred thousand square feet of manufacturing building, so that is the primary end use here, here. Uh, and as was mentioned earlier, the corollary is that we have the opportunity now provide the highs, the housing for the employees for this area. Now, what does it mean to be a PUD? Straightforward as to the ordinance, you need a hundred and ten acres to start, and then there's a list of information that you need to provide, which we provided in our, uh, The Village on Technology Hill Bible as far as our PUD. Now, there are development guidelines, I think it's important that I just touch on a couple of those. Um, stormwater management, this is primarily going to be a closed drainage system that will outlet to open infiltration areas. Uh, system of testing is conducted in all of those locations to make sure that the soils are appropriate for receiving that stormwater. From a layout standpoint, I did make mention of, uh, open space, in that we have both, uh, an active use, that being our community building. Um, we have passive areas, that being the center green, um, as well as just other conservation areas. There's nearly forty acres again that aren't being touched, provides the opportunity for nature trails, park horses, uh, opportunities for the people that work and live in this area to utilize the surrounding, but to do so in a positive way. Um, from a landscape perspective, um, we're fairly consistent with your regulations. I think there's only one, there's one minor departure as it relates to parking lots, in that when we look at this overall design, the residential areas in of themselves, you don't see a traditional, you know, hundred, two-hundred space parking lot, like you do with the more industrial type uses, street parking. Um, it's intended to be more of a residential layout feel, so that it is a community. Um, relative to those roadways and that parking, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention there is a traffic study that'd be associated with this project. That traffic study was scoped with the town staff. The traffic study has been completed, and it's been submitted for review. Uh, our expectation is that the ultimate approval would be done in, in accordance with the site plan approvals for this project. Um, there are always changes to square footages, um, minor elements that require revision, so it seems most appropriate that that traffic study be approved, uh, in connection with the site plans that are submitted. Uh, I think it's very important that this was included, though, as part of our overall package, and that it's known that there has been an evaluation done, it has been scoped with the town. It's not this ubiquitous item that was, that is an unknown. We have a clear understanding of the traffic impacts that would be associated with this project. Now, I've mentioned, uh, here and there throughout the presentation that there are a couple departures from the regulations. Uh, the original submittal of the PUD asked for twenty such departures. Uh, we've since slowed that down to sixteen, with, uh, the help of staff in an acknowledgement that several of them were simply not required. Areas in which we were asking for, uh, departures, we don't have to ask then for a departure to have the departure essentially. So there were four items that were able to be immediately eliminated. Before I talk too much about those elements, so I think it'd be good to, would you mind speaking a little bit to the architecture? I think you were one of the focal points in the conversation we had, um, with the Heritage Commission.
Sure, so, back in December, we appeared before the Heritage Commission. The, um, exemplars are in your, um, package of what we presented. Um, we're still refining the architecture at this point, you've designed the buildings, it's tough to go much further without I'm sorry. Let me make it easier and face you. So as I was saying, the, um, architecturals were well-received by the Heritage Commission. We received some positive feedback, we've incorporated the elements that they, um, brought up. Um, during that meeting, we would be recommunicating with the Heritage Commission as we go through the site plan process. Um, we have Stone River Architects with us tonight. Um, they will be with us throughout the entire process. They're further developing, um, all of the floor plans and construction documents as we speak. Um, one of the benefits of having a project of this magnitude and having the, um, essentially blank canvas with which to start is, you'll note that the, um, apartment buildings, which are usually peak roofs, have flat roofs. We intend this project to be fully solar as much as we can produce. So there'll be solar on top of the apartment buildings, as well as all of the industrial buildings that you saw, which will give us an opportunity to generate a significant amount of power. And all of that power, for the most part, will be utilized onsite. We'll still have to supplement some from the grid, but we're attempting to generate as much power as we possibly can and be the end user of that power. With Nick's very articulate presentation, you can see that the uses, although different, and typically historically, you find the residential in a residentially his own neighborhood, and the industrial in an industrially his own neighborhood, you can see how the uses are symbiotic and they work together. Okay, and that essentially is the essence of a village concept, where you cluster all kinds of different uses to support one another in the overall process. So, stay tuned during site plan, we'll be doing full architectural presentation. Um, if you have any questions tonight, like I said, our architect is present. However, we did receive very positive feedback from the Heritage Commission. You have copies of the initial presentations in your, in your package, and we'd be happy to answer any further questions regarding architecture.
Hey, Dick, for, for to have any questions on architecture? I think the, the buildings are very handsome. And I like
And I like I like very much on the residential building, the architectural feature that the peaked roof, which I think, which I think created a little bit of a problem for you on height by ten feet, but I'm very confident that our fire department has a hose that will shoot water ten feet. So I'm not that worried about it. The only thing I would say about that that residential building is it's hard to tell on this cartoon drawing, because that's kind of kind of what it is. If there's any kind of cornice on top of that building, just to draw the height down a little bit. And if that was possible, I know you're going to have, you know, solar and photovoltaics, PVs and whatever on top of there that you don't want to detract from, but I think that would add a little spice to the building as well. But other than that, I think the buildings are quite nice looking. And frankly, the only people that will see them are the people that are going into the development. And you would really need to go in there for a specific purpose. So, you know, it is what it is, but thank you to the architect for putting together some nice visuals for us.
If I may address something, Mr. Chair?
Absolutely.
You're right, we had asked for a ten-foot differential, it's really a five-foot differential. And at the top, the buildings are really forty-six feet to the roof line. And there's a parapet that comes up that essentially hides everything that's on the roof, including the solar panels themselves. But it's really only a differential of five feet. And the reason that we chose to go for the waiver of the five feet is because we have an area where we're providing full access for firemen, for inspection, for maintenance on the solar thing. So what it is, it's a stair tower essentially that rises five feet above that roof line that is the reason for the waiver.
Sure, and when you come back with your buildings, the fire department will weigh in on it anyway, so.
Absolutely.
Yes, as the site plan, it'll be a lot greater detail if it's applied.
Jason?
I had a comment about.
Hold on one second. Jason?
I want to echo Tony's on the architecture, I think it looks great. My only question is with the solar, did you check with the airport about any reflection? Because that is coming in right on the flight path.
We have, and the building directly down in front of us also has solar already. But we have checked with the airport.
Okay, thank you. Anne?
I am, I was surprised you were saying something about cohesive design. Because you vary between contemporary and colonial basically. Why not carry one theme over the whole development? Like you have a great contemporary building in the Solinsky Building. And then the industrial buildings look pretty appropriate along with that building. I wonder why you went with, you didn't go with that for the whole theme of the, you know, the businesses out at the street and the childcare center and the residences.
Forgive me, I'm going to go way out on a limb here.
I'm just saying that because I'm just questioning, because it seems so, you know, odd that you'd have contemporary and also more traditional together like that.
I'm going to put words in the architect's mouth now and he's probably going to come up here and hit me.
He's actually crying. You got him squirming. He's squirming already.
Even if you went mid-mod or something like that.
So we're looking to pick up some of the colonial history of the town of Londonderry while providing a modern contemporary look to it. Okay, so thereby you have the mixture of the two styles. And if I said anything out of turn, he's going to come running up here right now.
Anything you want to say, you got? Great.
We'll leave it at that for now.
Sure.
Okay, if you're happy, I'm happy.
All right, keep on going.
Okay, so relative to us, that is really the formal part of our presentation. The reality is we realize we have some departures, those are things we'd like to hear about and we're happy to take those in order if we like to do that. Or if there are just other general questions we wanted to address before we jump into those, whatever the board's favor is.
I think we got our questions right now out of the way, Anne, you look like you might have.
I have something about the whole document, do you want me to save it for later?
Yeah, save it for a little later, let's go through the the next stuff here and then hold on to that till we get back to the board.
Okay, well, if it's okay, what I'll do is I'll use the staff memorandum as our agenda and we'll go right through it.
That'd be great.
So relative to the first item, there's just section five point one, which is the residential development phasing. So in order to support the housing needs of our employees associated with the applicant's businesses, as well as combat the ongoing housing crisis, which we know to be an element, the applicant is seeking a modification to section five, one, three, F of the ordinance to allow creation of up to two hundred dwelling units per year from the date of site plan approval. This timing is consistent with the anticipated building timeline identified within the PUD, which would see the construction of the project over a span of four years. As Dick had mentioned in his opening, we're coming in, the idea is to rough grade the site, install the necessary infrastructure, our roadways, the drainage components. And then it's just a system of getting each one of those housing units online to then be able to support the businesses. If we follow the ordinance, which only allows twenty per calendar year, we'd only be able to get up about half a building a year and we'd be under a very long duration in order to see this project come to fruition. So the request is for two hundred units a year in lieu of the twenty that's identified in the ordinance.
How many units are in a building?
It does vary, I think at our largest, we have fifty-five and at the smallest, it's forty-three.
Thank you.
Sir.
So just so that the, so that the board understands again, so Nick's initial request of these that are in the PUD, they were so, they were very broad brush. And again, so when Kelly and I looked at this, it's like, what specifically are you asking a waiver to? So we spoke with Nick last week and Nick has refined it. He did provide us, and I haven't had an opportunity to look at what he's refined it to. So this evening, I have no comment now that, now that he has a better understanding. We'll have a better understanding. And as he indicated, there's some things he was asking a waiver for that there's no need for, believe it or not.
Yeah, no, I have to think, again, I got to thank Kelly and John, they took the time to reach out and say, hey, you know, pretty broad brushes in a few areas, can we tighten up the verbiage here so the board has a better understanding? So we've taken that opportunity, so mother nature gave us an extra week with the board meeting being canceled last week. So it's given us the opportunity to really go through the ordinance, refine the nature of our requests so we can be much more poignant about what we're needing. So I'll be able to read those elements as I started to relative to these, so.
Kelly, you look like you have something you wanted to say.
I just wanted to add that for the purposes of tonight, the board should have a discussion on this item and give the applicant some type of consensus or direction about what the board is thinking on this particular, on each modification.
Yeah, absolutely, and I think maybe while we go, we'll let him read one, we'll go through it instead of holding all our questions to the end. We'll go one by one here. I believe you said, correct me if I'm wrong, you said two hundred units?
Yes, sir.
Per year? Board have any input on that?
Couple of questions. So how long does it take to build two hundred units? Given today's economic conditions with workforce and everything else in the building community?
Well, we believe that we've lined up the workforce, we have a general contractor already aboard as a construction consultant and construction manager. We've sequenced them so that essentially while the infrastructure is being installed, as each pad becomes ready, it will go into a sequence so that the buildings will follow one another. Okay, the timeframe to get the first building is probably, I mean, there's probably close to ten months to a year of site work. Okay, we probably wouldn't start a building until we were at least eight to ten months in. Then it would take ten months to bring the first building online. Okay, so that gives you a schedule.
Ten months?
About approximately ten months to bring the first building online.
You can say that's, once you get to that first building, it's going to take about ten months. Would you say it's about a ten-month average per building from there?
No, from that point forward, Mr. Butler, it would be approximately sixty days. Because what we do is we start, drop the foundation, start framing that building, continue the site down, drop another foundation. Okay, so they would be going in sequence in that manner. None of them would be coming online all at the same time, they'd probably be coming online between a eight and a ten-week period between one another. Also, at that same time, we're ramping up, we'll be building the original Envision Building. So we'll be ramping up employees, so we'll have ready product for the employees when they come to work. So we're going to kind of time the first couple of buildings along with the first Envision Building to be simultaneous with one another so that we have the housing available for.
Housing for the staff of the building.
Exactly.
Yeah, that was my other question, as to how you're going to be phasing that with building the industrial buildings, so. Yeah, Woodmont has a waiver.
So your waiver will, you want to be released from phasing, but you want to phase, but you want to phase now?
The manner in which the ordinance spells it out is it says for our type of development, it would only allow up to twenty units. We're saying in lieu of asking for a waiver, we just want to modify that and say, can we do up to two hundred units in lieu of the twenty?
So if you got up to two hundred, then you're talking about two hundred, then another year of two hundred, and then the rest, the third year?
Essentially, with the four hundred thirty-nine units total.
Full buildout is approximately forty-eight months. So if we can get two hundred in the first year, the rest will follow directly into that timeline.
Does forty-eight months include your first year of site work?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I could just add a comment, the way that the standard is written now, based on the twenty units per year, it states that's from the date of final approval. So if the board is considering modifying this request, you might want to consider when you start the timeline, meaning do you want it to be from the date of the final approval of the residential site plan, or do you want it to be from a different timeline?
Yeah.
So the issue with phasing came up, and you all know this, but I'm talking to other people. The topic of phasing came in to try and protect the school district and the taxpayers from from a sudden influx of X number of children that they didn't have space for, room for, teachers for, or whatever. That was the whole idea of phasing, you all know that. The number of children per unit has gone down according to Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission, and I believe it was point one seven?
Point one seven per unit for multifamily houses.
Per unit for multis. So in this case, if you went to two hundred, that's thirty-four kids a year, which comparatively speaking, if the school district has a year in advance for site work and plan for, if they actually hit the point one seven, which I think it's been lower than that, but in Londonderry, but so as one person, I think that adding for this, asking for this two hundred per in phasing, I don't think affects the school district much with the one-year advance notice because of the site work. Knowing that there's going to be another two hundred the next year, right, so.
Yeah, the fiscal impact analysis notes that, yes, I think it'd be lower than that.
Yeah, so I'm okay, I'm glad that it's going to be phased instead of just the four hundred. And I think it's okay, I think it's safe.
Again, there's a twelve-month window there too that the school can prepare and say, hey, we should expect X amount of kids the next school year.
Correct. Jason?
I agree with you, I think the phasing is, but I think we're more likely to see a higher number of kids per children per unit here, simply because of the onsite childcare. It's going to be a value add for a lot of people. So I think we're likely to see more families that have kids. So I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a deal breaker or anything, but I think we're probably going to see more than that point one seven per unit.
If I may make a point, Mr. Chair?
Absolutely.
Just remember that those children dispersed over twelve grades, so.
Right, yeah.
That's the point, that's why. And to that point about the childcare, that also gives the school district an additional metric to look at to say, if that, because they know all the childcare places around, now you're going to have another one. If they know there's eleven three-year-olds in there from that development and they have access to that information, then that's additional planning that they have to use.
Almost another tool in their toolbox to prepare for what's ahead of them.
Correct.
Yeah, I don't view that additional number as like being, it's going to suddenly flood the schools.
Well, yeah, you also have to kind of, I mean, when we think about the school district and we, so I'm looking at this and that daycare center, it's huge. That's huge for this development, huge for our community. I'm also looking at it from the standpoint of, by law, we we provide what Londonderry calls leap services, special education services for school-aged students that are, that have identified there. Yeah, so those are mostly identified in the preschool setting, funding's available. We have Moose Hill that houses that. Our town recently had two two warrant articles where the citizens, the citizens did not approve, you know, an expansion of that Moose Hill building. That Moose Hill building right now has four modules where where kindergarteners are learning in, and you know, so there's a lot to do in that building. I'm, you know, this whole plan here, it's exciting, right? That live, work, play aspect that you, that you worked on, I remember being on the board of the live, work, play Governor Lynch Initiative ten, fifteen years ago when I was a young professional. Gosh. But this is exactly kind of like these innovative type, you know, aspects that are kind of where Londonderry is absolutely attracting that. I'm looking at your estimated school-aged children, I apologize, I'm just looking at it, you know, I'm looking at the report right now, just received it right now. So I, and I do look that you did, you did, you have used McGregor Cut and Main Street at Woodmont as kind of your basis to, you know, to estimate those enrollments. You know, and, you know, as the report's laying out here, we are seeing a decline. I'm, this is the type of development that potentially could, you know, have that nominal increase. That may not be, we may not be seeing in this, in this data here. So that's, I just want to call that out, because I think it's important of kind of you understanding where our town is on, you know, on capital expenditures. The school district also, and you may, we, when you met with Superintendent Black there, also two years ago, released a master facility study. You know, the Cliff Notes, all of our district buildings need renovations, significant renovations to educate twenty-first century students. So I'm going down the path of, we want to increase here, we want to definitely, you know, support, you know, support our youth and our students. And this is the type of development that definitely does that. So, you know, if we definitely have another conversation on this, I'd like to really kind of, you'll focus in on, you know, these estimates and where we're kind of seeing that. Because if I'm a young professional looking to move to Londonderry, work in one of these high-income tech, you know, tech, you know, tech jobs, I want to raise a family here. You know, I'm right off ninety-three, you know, I have this convenience store that, you know, I can get my, you know, my stuff, you know, I can put my child in childcare. But man, I want to like walk to work, I want to kind of do all that. And, you know, I want my kids to be very passionate, you know, kind of be very involved with the school communities in that. So I really kind of think, you know, maybe, you know, it could be an opportunity to relook at that, those estimates and, you know, kind of account for kind of the visibility of Londonderry and where it is. And, you know, those, you might see, you may see a jump in the number of school-aged children that this supports.
So, if I may, Mr. Chair? So when we looked at it, and one of the reasons, and you articulately and hit the nail on the head with respect to the childcare, it's not just the. on the head with respect to the childcare, it's not just the availability of childcare to our employees and our residents, it's also taking the pressure off the school district by providing them with a steady pipeline, but also a significant amount of communication back and forth. Ken and Grace's vision of this project is that it's somewhat self-sufficient, okay? That's why the impact study was, the fiscal impact study was so important, because we are so tax-positive, you could double the amount of children and you'd still be making money on this project.
Right, yeah. That, that tax, that tax-positive number there is, that's nice.
Their intent, after being already in this, somewhat very close in this location for over thirty years and being a good corporate resident in town of Lunen Derry, is essentially to leave a permanent legacy here. So, what you're seeing before you is a legacy project, okay? It's well-designed, it's well-thought-out, it's symbiotic in use, it's innovative, it has both modern and colonial architecture. I mean, a lot of thought and effort has been put into this by top consultants, so, just being the lowly developer that gets up here and essentially explains it all, I'm very proud to be part of this project for those reasons.
Never heard him call me top consultant, actually.
I don't think I've ever heard anybody call you that.
Well, thank you. I mean, I definitely appreciate that, but it's, we definitely, and I'm definitely not questioning that, not questioning the work, I'm just kind of seeing, you know, other da, you know, data that's also, you know, we didn't definitely see, not only ours, you know, not only, you know, Moose Hill, but North School was also definitely on that feasibility study that, you know, that had a lot of different kind of needs to it, and that, and that's where these, you know, students would, you know, spend their elementary years.
Roger, you, you looked like you had one.
Yeah, I just, I have a comment more than anything. One of the things, obviously, is the effect on the school system here is important, and something that perhaps you might already have, but maybe you should have from your company a liaison with the school system. Not, just to keep them informed so they know as the steps are coming up. I'm sure we all will, but a direct liaison is always good.
Yeah, we'll make a note of that, Mr. Philio.
Who you would liaison with, I'm not sure, but somebody in the school system.
Start with the superintendent.
Yes, there you go.
That's kind of the role I was referring to with respect to the daycare center.
Yeah.
Okay, that they would be in regular contact with the school system and thereby be providing them with up-to-date data of exactly what's going on within our project.
Well, one of the more prevalent things, as you're building up, the, the daycare center isn't there yet, but the fact is, it will have an impact. So, if the school department knows that it's coming online, or that more children are coming in, that's all, that's what I was looking at.
Okay. Kelly?
I just wanted to add, Mr. Chair, that both myself and the town manager have been in communication with the superintendent of the schools, and we preliminarily discussed this project with Dan Black. It was very, you know, early stages, but we did highlight the density, the daycare element, and we continue to provide that type of data to the school for any project that has a significant number of units, just so that they have an awareness of the potential projects in the pipeline.
Great. Thank you. Anything else from the board? Are we gonna sit on this until, until staff has a comment?
Yeah, I, I wanna kinda, as they're going through each one, let us get our thoughts out of our head, 'cause there's a lot here, and then go on to the next one, and we'll, we'll circle back, bring staff in.
There's thirty-one to go?
Yeah.
First one's always the longest.
Yeah, absolutely. Just, just to touch on what Jeff said, you know, I agree with a lot, a lot of what he did say. There's certainly a concern there that, you know, the, the, the school district didn't necessarily get some of the, the capital support they were hoping for, and, you know, what effect could that have on, or could this development have on that, knowing that we didn't get already needed space in some of our buildings as we stand today? You know, what could an additional thirty or forty kids do on that? But, but I will, I'd be ready to, to move on to the next one here.
Could I just ask a question?
Real quick.
Oh, we're talking about starting up, and I was just wondering, when you were talking about the construction, starting, and the construction equipment, which entrance are you gonna use for the heavy equipment to come in? Car, what, uh, carer or Kitty Hawk?
We would be able to have access to it from a carerway for the retail and childcare uses, but otherwise, we need to build our bridge first in order to get across to span to the southerly portions, so that access would be via Kitty Hawk.
Excuse me?
So, that access would initially be from Kitty Hawk, and it's something that we're working with our construction manager so that he would be able to help define for us how best to access the areas, so they can best build this project as efficiently as possible.
Yeah, okay.
The goal would be, however, and to build from a carerway through to Kitty Hawk, that one sort of main artery that Nick is outlining right now. That would be the first piece of the infrastructure put in.
Okay.
And also, I'll point out that the first building to be built will actually be the commercial building, because we intend to use that as a construction office, warehouse, and our base for operations. We would build that building into the shell, we would utilize it on-site, so you wouldn't have unsightly trailers and all of that kind of stuff. It would give us our base of operations, and ultimately, at the very end, circle back and turn it into the commercial space.
Thank you. You wanna go on to section six?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, so, this is in regards to conditionally-use permits. I don't, I don't know that we necessarily need to read through all the preface, but recommend, I do see that staff's recommend granting the waiver, but subject to the exception when I apply conditionally-use permits for the Conservation Overlay District. Our request is intended to remove the formal CUP process with the Conservation Commission relating to impacts to the wetland buffers and Conservation Overlay District. Now, we'll still meet with the Conservation Commission, so they can provide us the guidance on the items and the importance to the commission, and allow their advisory comments to the planning board for consideration, but again, it'd just be no formal CUP would be issued. So, this, there is a, I believe, an appropriate reason for this request, and that this approach is requested in the, in lieu of establishing buffers to existing wetland areas. We've developed the project in an environmentally conscientious manner to avoid wetland impacts and preserve large blocks of unfragmented land. Of the hundred and ten some-odd acres that we have, we have nine hundred and fifty square feet of wetland impact, and that's only because it was one of the last areas that we delineated, and it was right in the middle of our access road, and in order to avoid it, would have dramatic impacts to the overall project. The, as I had mentioned in the opening, the layout...
How many acres of wetland are in that one-ten?
I knew that question was coming, and I don't have the answer for this evening, but I'll make sure that I have that for you for next time. It, when we think of it as a percentage, the amount of wetlands that we're impacting is in the hundreds of a percent.
Can you go, that was under a thousand square feet for the entire project?
For the entire, for the entire project.
Thank you.
So, this approach allows for over forty acres of the hundred and ten acre development to remain in its current existing vegetative state, and we do feel this is consistent with the goals and objectives identified by our PUD, the objectives and characteristics defined in the Conservation Overlay District, and supported by the spirit and intent of the Lunen Derry Master Plan. Now, we've had several meetings with the Conservation Commission, they did provide us a letter of support, and our expectation is continue to work with them to make sure we can refine this project to minimize those impacts to the extent practical. Now, this is in regards to section six, conditionally-use permits, but it's very tidily, very closely tied to item four, which is section four point six one, relative to Conservation Overlay Districts. So, if I may, Mr. Chair, can I take these as one?
Absolutely.
So, we are requesting a modification here. To provide clarification, what we're proposing is a modification of section four six one, Conservation Overlay Districts. It's not implying temporary wetland impacts to accommodate appropriate work zones adjacent to new structure. What we'd like to do is revise our request to state, if granted, would allow a retaining wall as close as five feet to the edge of a jurisdictional wetland. This modification is intended to accommodate retaining wall construction, and no temporary wetland impacts are requested at this time. In reading our original supplemental, and thanks to John for pointing it out, it's just too broad a rush. A structure, any structure could be within a certain distance of a wetland. That wasn't in our, wasn't our intention. Our intention was to preserve as much of that wetland in the surrounding area as possible, which those retaining walls allow. You do need a certain construction area, most of those retaining walls that we do have are preliminary designed in the nature of four to five feet tall, so that provides that one-to-one setback so that they could be constructed. Our expectation is there, beyond that, less than thousand square feet of wetland, no other wetlands would be impacted as part of this project. So, with those two items in concert, that, you know, we've designed this project overall so that we could have these large blocks of, of wetlands that would be able to be, remain in their, their current state, we are asking to work closer to them. What that does essentially is it, it moves that buffer that would otherwise be established back up against the wetland in itself, but provides the opportunity for a larger, more cohesive area to remain intact. So, that's the nature of our request.
Board, do they have any questions on those two? Wanna keep going?
All right, section four, excuse me, set, item three, section four, zoning district use tables. This one's rather straightforward. Section five two six, permitted use of the ordinance requires the applicant to identify their applicable zoning district's use tables. We feel this waiver to provide the uses as listed is justified to support the proposed mixed-use village. As defined within the PUD, the Village on Technology Hill seeks to provide an integrated industrial village that harmonizes work, life, and recreation, and emphasizes growth of the industrial zoning areas near the Manchester-Boston Regional Airport. So, all that good stuff that Dick started with is the embodiment of why we're trying to propose these uses.
Anything from the board on that? Do you know, keep going?
All right, we spoke to number four, number five, section five one seven, relative vehicle access and parking. What this really is, we're not looking to waive all of section two seven, or, all of section five one seven. What we're specifically asking to do is to calculate our parking based off of a specific parking regulation, that being the Parking Generation Manual of the Institute of Transportation Engineers, sixth edition, October twenty twenty-three, as an appropriate alternative to establish parking requirements. The remainder of the Lunen Derry standards would be preserved. So, this is using the most current regulation and book that our traffic engineers and transportation engineers use to calculate, to calculate parking to apply to this facility.
Which typically, those numbers are less than the town's regulations.
It's a fair, fair assessment.
Just to understand...
Say that again, typically, those regulations are less?
Those numbers that, the numbers that are generated using the ITE are, are less than the towns.
Okay.
Just, just so you understand the difference.
One thing we will do, and it was a suggestion within the embodiment of the document, was provide you guys a table, what are the differences, so we'll make sure we update our, our report to reflect that. Yep.
If I may also make a comment, Mr. Chair? So, when you're looking at the overall project, and you're looking at a live, work, play situation, you're not getting the industrial worker coming in and the resident being there at the same time, so there's a overlap of parking that takes place, thereby allowing less spaces needed for actual operations, but more importantly, we're trying to eliminate as much impervious surface as we can and keep as much open space and, and, and land in its raw state. So, yes, it might be less than the standard, but we feel that we can operate with it based on what I just said.
Anybody have any questions on that?
I think that's what's key, though, to Dick, is again, like Nick indicated, you know, put it into a table, that way it's understandable.
Yeah.
You understand.
Yeah.
Lot of tables.
Absolutely. Everyone gets what Ken just said, right? Yeah, so, I think that, I think that I'm more of a green space guy rather than a black space guy. I think throughout the town, we have way too much black space that's being unused, unutilized, or whatever. Also, if you look at a project like this philosophically, if you don't have enough parking, you gotta live with it. The general public really isn't coming in here, and if you don't have enough parking, it really doesn't hurt the general public. Y'all are up, gonna be up on the hill, on top of the rock pile, in your own little mess that you got going on, if, if it turns into a mess. If, if, if you're right, it's gonna be, you know, symbiotic and, and beautiful, and birds will be flying and chirping and stuff, so, I, I would rather see less parking than more, and so, I'm, I'm okay with this. Anything else?
All right, section seven signage. I'll read this one in totality. The applicant requests a waiver and modification to section seven oh signs. Sign standards for residential, non-residential, and mixed-use areas shall be determined by the terms of section two nine B nineteen signage of the PUD Master Plan. So, we have a little bit more specific request, in that the intent of the PUD, PUD section two nine B nineteen signage is to clarify and expand upon the Town of Lunen Derry zoning ordinance, seven point five measurement and calculations of area. The PUD will be updated to remove the words "with exception" to the waiver requests in the paragraphs described in the first paragraph of our PUD, and remove the words "modifications", "waiver", and "replace" in the fourth paragraph. This modification is intended to remove any ambiguity from the current regulations. Not that we're being overly critical of the current regulations, but relative to the signage areas, if we provide a little bit more detail, I think it'll make it a lot easier for the board and staff moving forward to say, this is what was intended, and not the intent of this, this request.
Is there any other parts of our sign ordinance you could help us with, please? Because we need some help on the sign ordinance, just saying.
Fair enough, fair enough. Okay, if seen no other further comments, item seven, section two definitions. Again, this one's very much a clarification. The applicant requests a waiver to section two definitions. To the extent the PUD Master Plan contains different definitions for terms used in both the Lunen Derry zoning ordinance and the PUD, and definitions stated in the glossary of the PUD Master Plan shall prevail. We have one item where there's really a difference. All the other items are really just for clarification. We have something along the lines of a park course and planning board, and what GIS means, and what does general retail building mean. The important one here is building height. What we're asking for is the definition of building height shall be modified as follows. Building height shall not exceed fifty feet, except for structures not intended for human occupancy. Parentheses, parapets, solar panels, stairwell roof access, et cetera, shall not exceed fifty-five feet. The remainder of the definitions are provided for clarity only and not intended to supersede any definitions in the reference regulation. This gets to what Dick was speaking to earlier. We're not asking for sixty-foot-tall buildings, we're asking for the ability to have a fifty-foot-tall building, but just clarifying what the intent is of those areas not intended for human occupancy. Right now, there's a couple of listed items in the zoning ordinance, we wanna make sure that it's clear that the parapet, solar panels, and stairwell roof access are included within that element.
You said it was the stairwell roof access was the big one, correct?
Yeah, because instead of having a hatch, we're providing a full access for maintenance, for fire, for all of those kinds of things.
Yep, thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a quick question? You said stairwell, is there gonna be elevators in the building?
Yes, all of the buildings are elevated.
Okay, you don't need any extra roof acts?
It doesn't go up that high, it stops at the top floor, and then the stairwell goes up from there.
Okay, thanks.
Board, do they have any questions on that?
All right, so ends the, so ends the elements related to the zoning ordinance, so there are, there's only a few. In regards to the site plan requirements, items one and two, you may cross off. When we read through this, it was our original understanding that we needed to waive this in order to have waivers and modifications in of themselves for the document. It's not the case. Those, those modifications that we are discussing right now are able to stand on their own without the request of relief of both section three point oh one A, approval of improvements, and section three point oh one C, standards and specifications. The reason why we are having this conversation is I wanna make sure that is the case, working with staff, that was their expectation. We wanted to make sure we had this conversation with the board as well. Essentially, we're withdrawing that from the request, because it's, we don't need to ask for a waiver in order to have the waivers we're asking for.
That makes sense?
Yep.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, that is items one and items two. All right, the third item, and I know this will be John's favorite, section three point oh seven, storm drain system. So, we are requesting a modification, and I'm gonna read, this is a little lengthy, so please stick with me. We anticipate the need to utilize underground detention on the site, which the site plan regulations allow, section three oh seven A one. We also anticipate the need to account for infiltration of storm water in accordance with state regulations, E N V W Q fifteen hundred, alteration of terrain. Considering existing soil conditions and field testing would be done to determine appropriate infiltration rates. Although the regulations do not prohibit these practices, prior recommendations from third-party review in the town of, the Town Department of Engineering and Environmental Services has typically recommended that certain elements of that not be included, or have otherwise been excluded, have excluded the ability to count for these important practices. Now, what does this result in? This results in stormwater best management practices that are, in our view, oversized for their intended purpose. This is further exemplified by section three oh seven B ten of the site plan regulations... This is further exemplified by section three oh seven B ten of the site plan regulations that requires twelve inches of freeboard for a detention basin during a fifty-year storm event. The storm detention basins of old, which just held water and had a liner or otherwise, a lot of reason for that. There's been a great maturation of our stormwater design, specifically just even in the last ten years, as to the way in which alteration of terrain reviews these items, and the way different municipalities are also addressing them. In our view, this regulation is antiquated in comparison to the current requirements due to maturation again of the stormwater best management practices, which include both infiltration and filtration practices that require the embankment or the elevation of that berm not to be exceeded during a fifty-year storm event, i.e. not a foot of freeboard, but just making sure it doesn't overtop. We would request this modification via discussion with the board to confirm the standards proposed do not have an impact on the public health and safety as specified in the ordinance. And it's important to hearken back to that because within the PUD, there is a statement that certain items cannot be waived if they are of negative consequence to the public health and safety. Requiring a foot of freeboard in a fifty-year storm, I won't say is arbitrary, I'm sure it was purposeful when it was intended, but it doesn't meet the current rules and regulations. So there are a total of one, two, three, four items within the stormwater regulations. So the four or five pages you have, there's four specific items that we're asking for a departure from. Three point oh seven A one, which is general, the manner in which this currently reads. So what I'll do is I'm going to give you the current and what we're asking to modify. The drainage system shall be designed so that the post-development runoff rate does not exceed the pre-development runoff rate. Detention-retention areas may be used to achieve this requirement. Underground detention structures may be permitted where they are determined by the town to be a reasonable application without detriment to adjacent properties and environmental systems or contrary to public interest. Underground detention structures shall be designed, constructed, and maintained in accordance with the New Hampshire Stormwater Manual, volumes one, two, and three, dated December twenty eighth or latest revision. Our modification would read as follows. The drainage system shall be designed so the post-development runoff rate does not exceed pre-development runoff rate, no change. Stormwater management areas may be used to achieve this requirement. So we're removing the terminology that's somewhat dated as far as detention-retention basins. We have so many more tools in the engineer's tool belt now as far as designing these. So these areas may be used to achieve this requirement, period. Underground detention structure areas are permitted, and all stormwater management areas shall be designed, constructed, and maintained in accordance with the New Hampshire Stormwater Manual, volumes one, two, and three, dated September, or dated December twenty eight two thousand eight or latest revision, i.e. N H D S chapter E N V W Q fifteen hundred A O T. So in our minds, what we're doing is we're taking out some dated language, saying all of these best management practices have been approved by the state. They've been approved by the state, that means they aren't of negative consequence to public health or safety, and we would like to be able to use that element. There have been some historical, call them recommendations, where we consider bottoms of basins impervious. It's not written into the regulations, but it's historically been a recommendation. By removing some of this narrative at the town's discretion, which does give the town the opportunity to limit us in those capacities, we're looking to go to the current standard and standards that are tried and true and are appropriate for a project of this magnitude. The second item is in regards to seven, three oh seven B ten design computations. As currently written, this reads flood routing calculations shall be provided for the design of each detention basin and pond using acceptable methods such as modified pulse, storage indication, or as may be approved by the town engineer. In addition to the design storm, a fifty-year storm analysis shall be conducted to establish the fifty-year elevation at the detention basin. A minimum of twelve inches of freeboard shall be provided above the fifty-year storm to the minimum elevation of the embankment at the detention basin. I'm just going to skip to that last sentence, that's what we want to revise. All the other elements would hold true, but a minimum freeboard in accordance with N H D S chapter E N V W Q fifteen hundred alteration of terrain shall be provided above the fifty-year storm to the minimum elevation of the embankment of the stormwater management practice. So we're just getting current to those regulations. We don't feel that that foot of freeboard is warranted, and that although we will strive for that as part of our stormwater management, which is something that I've reviewed with John, to be beholden to that arbitrary one foot, it's really just not in the best interest of the development. So we're asking for a modification there. Three point oh seven G one, pipe size, velocity, and type. Your current standard requires a fifteen-inch pipe, no matter what, no matter what the flow. We're asking to modify that to allow the minimum pipe size to be twelve inches. There are other regulations that are within that subsection that talk about maximum, minimum velocities, cleansing velocities. When you have a larger pipe, it's harder to get those cleansing velocities. So when we have small, we have small contributing areas, a lot of times we end up asking for a waiver because we can't attain that cleansing velocity because, it's just because the pipe's too big for what drains in it. So that would be the nature of one request. And the last item, which is three oh seven H relative to drainage structures, currently reads manholes and other drainage structures shall be precast concrete, meaning H twenty loading, and constructed and installed in accordance with New Hampshire Department of Transportation Standards and Specifications for road and bridge construction. All good. Drainage structures shall not exceed eighteen inch, or excuse me, eighteen feet in depth, rim to bottom of structure, an important standard as well, make sure it's constructable and can be accessed. All catch basins shall be outfitted with a polyethylene liner downspout. Okay, also has value. Outlet structures at detention basins, when necessary, shall be the typical Town of Londonderry standard structure, a vertical slotted weir with overtopping grate and properly sized outlet pipe. Therein lies the item that we're looking to revise. Such that it would read outlet structures at stormwater management areas, when necessary, shall be typical to that allowed by N H D S E N V W Q fifteen hundred alteration of terrain. Now, having had the luxury of designing the vast majority of the drainage systems that are associated with this project, we currently have, to my knowledge, the Town of Londonderry outlet structure at each one of our basins. We have one particular area, which is rather difficult in trying to provide the appropriate attenuation of storms. Really takes a lot of tools out of the tool belt that we have to use this one structure. We're asking to have the opportunity to use other structures. Now, what could those be? That could be as simple as a catch basin or manhole type structure of an appropriate size, that would have a trash rack on it and an inlet orifice that would then meter those flows. It just wouldn't necessarily be precisely slotted. We found that those slotted orifices, when smaller, clog much easier and lose their effectiveness over time. Although noted, if maintained appropriately, the effectiveness would be okay. We're just really asking for the opportunity to use some other tools here relative to that request. And those are the four items in regards to stormwater management. Of those four items, I don't think any of those are detrimental to life or limb when we talk about public safety or health, and as such, could potentially be waived by the planning board. Now, I haven't had the opportunity to specifically review these with John yet. He just got this today, so I'd like the opportunity to review that further with him. I would be appreciative of the board's thoughts when it comes to those specific four items and whether or not they're appropriate.
So back up a little bit, just to understand, you're saying that you would like to meet the N H A O T permit regulations outlined in E N V W Q fifteen hundred. Those are state regulations that may differ from the Town of Londonderry's regulations.
That is correct.
Nonetheless, you are still meeting all the state requirements that you will have to be going through for this project irregardless.
Yes, sir.
So some of them would be like the outlet structure, a couple of things. So first of all, and the zoning for a PUD five point two does not allow the board to waiver, to waive any of our drainage regulations, our stormwater regulations. So there's going to be some further discussion with Nick and I. That way I can understand particularly whatever he's talking about. Second, don't forget, this is the top of a hill. So you're going to have a huge pond at the top of a hill, so you want to have all the belts and suspenders, in my opinion. And then granted, I'm a conservative engineer. The one foot of freeboard, and then the discussion that Nick has about their typical outlet structure, I've got no clue what that. I don't think D S has a typical outlet structure. Town has a typical outlet structure because it works. I've been here for twenty-two years, and each pond that's been designed, I can go to that pond and it's working. You know, it can be maintained, so that is the other issue that's, you know, we've got to be careful on. So as Nick indicated, you know, I need to converse a little further, what he's actually asking for, and, you know, and again, maybe there would be some waivers. I just, you've got to be very careful, just carte blanche, you know, granting all these waivers. And again, I just repeat, it's not permitted by our zoning, and it's at the top of the hill, so we've got to be careful. Infiltration, where they're going to be blasting into ledge, that's another thing. How do you infiltrate into ledge? That's, so I'll stop now.
Do you feel as though? So you feel as though that the state's requirements, if I'm understanding that, you're concerned that the state's requirements are not enough?
Yeah, absolutely. Don't forget, again, they'll approve it, and they're supposed to be doing the maintenance to it. We're an MS four community, and you'll be seeing this shortly, me coming forward with some other ordinances regarding maintenance of these facilities. If it's not maintained, there's going to be a problem. So.
Anything from the board?
So I need to get John's input before I can make any comment whatsoever.
Yeah, I agree with Lynn.
I agree, but I do have a question. So let's say we allow them to use what they want to use, and a year down the road, we have a five-year flood, because we don't have a hundred-year floods anymore, we have, we have one every year or every five years. And what they put in fails. So they own it, they've got to make the repairs and fix it and whatever they've got to do, because these are not going to be public roads that they're going under, right? They're private roads?
Correct. But again, but the stormwater would, again, the stormwater will be private, too.
Yeah.
So I guess, okay, Mr. D, go fight with inside technologies, you know, technology on the hill.
Yeah, but the, but the, the train wreck is going to be on their property. If the water can't get through, the train wreck's on their property, what comes down onto town land, onto the racetrack that's across the street or whatever?
It'll be on the abutters land.
Got it. Thank you.
Between their development and Greneyfield Road, there's quite a bit of development in there.
Got it, thank you.
Anything else from the board?
I agree.
All right, on to the next one. Item four, section three point oh nine Vehicle Circulation Parking and Looting Standards. Again, this is a little bit of a reiteration in that, again, we're asking to use the IT Parking Generation Manual for the calculation of our parking. It just happens to show up in multiple places in either your ordinance, site plan regulations, or subdivision regulations. So I feel we've addressed that one, so unless there's further dialogue?
No, you can keep going.
Okay. In regards to landscape and design standards, essentially, we are asking to waive only where there are items that are in conflict with what we have proposed. The modifications that we are asking for are really specific, specific to section three ten G, which is mitigating the impact of parking lots. The idea is we're not trying to have massive screening elements between what is a circular loop roads that are associated with our housing element. We do have trees, they'd be planted every fifty feet. They're planted in appropriate areas such they'll survive. We're not looking to screen street parking from adjacent uses, and similarly, the manner in which we laid out the facility somewhat precludes that need. We do have that central arterial that runs through the middle of the property, that's also an elevated roadway, such that you have a natural bifurcation of the property between the residential and industrial uses. Adding an excessive amount of vegetation, in our minds, is inappropriate, so we have some minor modifications. So I'll provide some additional detail to staff for their review in regards to that item. But when it is not a universal request, it's specific just to item three ten G, and that's in regards to mitigating the impacts of parking lots. If no specific comments, I'll move to the next section, which is section three twelve Building and General Appearance Design Standards.
Stand with me for one second.
Yes, sir.
Board to have anything on that before we keep going? No? All right, go ahead.
All right. So this is actually very similar to the signage standard, where the intent of the modification here is to remove future ambiguity that the Building and General Appearance Design Standards are met, and the additional information provided in section two nine B eighteen, which is our PUD, is to provide clarification as to how they are met. All projects would be reviewed by the Heritage Commission, as is typical practice. So again, this is just providing additional details on our architects' design and intent practices to show how they are consistent with your architectural design guidelines, again, to remove future ambiguity as part of those review processes.
Everybody all set with that?
Very good. Number seven, section six oh one C On-Site Improvements. You may eliminate this one. Actually, no, I apologize, this one is a continuation. So in order to protect wearing course pavement during construction of other PUD components, we are requesting a modification to allow a certificate of occupancy issued by the Building Department after onsite improvements specified on the applied site plan are completed and inspected in accordance with section six point oh two up to binder course pavement. That's the kicker. Right now, it reads wearing course. The reality is, we're going to have multiple buildings going up in sequence to put in our final pavement as the infrastructure lat in order to allow a CO. We'd be damaging that pavement and shortening its lifespan, which wouldn't be the objective. So we're merely asking to swap out that terminology from wearing course to binder course.
And I think we could come up with an understanding of at what point?
Does that then need to be applied? Yep, I'd like to work with that on you on how we determine that.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
And as well, as well on the binder, on the binder course, making sure that you have shoulders raising up to any raised structures or anything like that on the road.
All appropriate transitions to facilitate access, drainage, you name it.
Flat tires and everything.
Yes, sir.
Everybody understands that, you should be good.
All right. The next one's actually very similar, similar to the prior request to protect wearing course pavement, the request of modification of the definition stated in this section for substantial completion of improvements as shown on the site plan. As currently written, it reads completion of all infrastructure and drainage improvements to support the development, including the roadway wearing course in accordance with the approved plans. The modification would be completion of all infrastructure and drainage improvements to support the development, including the roadway binder course in accordance with the approved plans. So just again, that one, one change, very similar to the item above. All right, we're getting there folks. All right, next item is the Londonderry subdivision regulations. We may cross out item one.
You have a number nine land use fees, site plan fee?
You know what, I jumped right over that because staff recommended it. We're essentially looking at this kind of like an alteration of a train permit. Charges per square foot we're impacting, so that way we're not double counting areas and looking at this and say, okay, it's one hundred and ten acres, every time you come back, you're paying for one hundred and ten acres. This allows the applicant to pay for the areas in which they'd be impacting as part of each site plan application.
Thank you.
This is how we handle each Woodmont site plan?
Yep.
It's just, in the Woodmont example, they typically have the waiver every time they come forward.
Yep. No, I'm good with that.
Thought ahead on this one. All right. Jumping ahead, apologies for that. Londonderry subdivision regulations, items one and two may be struck. Again, that's, we don't need to ask a waiver to have a waiver. And then we just have items three and four. Item three is a regurgitation of the stormwater drain requirements. So that would be handled as part of the review with Engineering and Environmental Services. The next item is in regards to high-intensity soil study. Again, this is really an antiquated reference, it's very infrequently that these are done. We do site-specific soils mapping now, and that's what's been provided for the project site. So we would ask to have that waived.
Any questions on that? Thank you.
All right. Jumping ahead, there, in addition to the requested waivers and modifications submitted by the applicant, staff recommends the board consider the following. This one's a little long-winded, but it'll make sense in the end, I think. The calculation presented in the PUD for the allowable number of residential units uses the entire property development area of one hundred and ten acres. The residential village area, too, is known to only be thirty-eight acres. The calculation number of units for the development based on only thirty-eight acres of residential area result in not more than two hundred and twenty-eight units at six units per acre. And staff provides a recommendation. We've since done a little bit of additional research that we had originally evaluated, and I'm going to read just a couple of sections that pull rate from your ordinance and I think provide the clarification necessary that the one hundred and ten acres is the appropriate mechanism for determining density.
What are you proposing for a number of units?
Our total number of units is four hundred and thirty-nine. By the six, by, what is it, per six acres, if we just took it as a microcosm of one hundred and ten, we'd be allowed six hundred and sixty. When you break it down in the land use components that the town otherwise provides, I think it's four hundred and seventy-four would be allowable, so we'd still be under those, both of those thresholds. So reading from the ordinance, section five two seven C Standards of Development of the Ordinance states, in PUDs where residential uses are proposed, the overall residential density of a PUD may not exceed six residential dwelling units, including single-family homes, per gross acre of the PUD tract. That's the important part, PUD tract. It goes on to re- the important part, PUD tract. Um, it goes on to read, "In determining appropriate density in addition to other criteria here, the planning board shall pay special attention to the amount of viable land contained on the tract as determined on reasonable, um, estimate in the subdivision materials. Permitted non-residential uses may be located in a flexible spatial environment assuring compatibility with residential uses and the overall, uh, development design, period." You know, "In the case of the proposed PUD, the mixed-use village is comprised of a singular tract. We have one parcel, a hundred and ten acres. There's no subdivision that's being proposed. Um, as documented in several locations of the ordinance, the term tract does not imply land use areas or types, as this is otherwise defined within the ordinance, i.e. tract does not correlate to the area associated with the land use type in calculating the allowable density." Would also draw your attention to section five two five B, basic requirements, which defines tract size, "As the minimum area required for a PUD shall be a hundred continuous acres." That in and alone says, what is a tract? It is your PUD, therefore it must be one hundred acres. Um, we would therefore be allowed to account for our density based off the total hundred acres of our PUD tract, based off of the definitions of the ordinance. So we'll provide that. I, I had an opportunity to talk to Kelly about it briefly today. I think we're on the same page. Um, but by this definition, tract is the entirety of the PUD and a density would be calculated accordingly, uh, as demonstrated by the calculations in the ordinance and also, uh, replicated in our PUD application. So I, I think we're in a good, good spot for this. It's no, no different than we would see any other mixed-use development, as long as it's a singular tract, they have the opportunity to count for their density over the entirety of that land area.
I get the tract piece, Nick, but, but what about usable land, the wetlands? Does it, again, and I'm gonna have to?
So.
A few months.
Yep. Further, further in the documentation of our application, we do that full calculation, which would allow up to four hundred and seventy-four units when you exclude easements, steep slopes, wetlands, and we still fall below that threshold.
Okay. So that four, that four thirty-nine is, is below the threshold that?
The usable land calc- using the usable land calculation.
That way we're, we're covered in both instances.
Okay.
So that's why, again, the calculation will be beneficial, that you see how we came up with it.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
All right. Um, comments, questions in regards to?
I think providing the, the calculation makes, makes sense. Does the board have any, anything else you wanna add to that?
The, it's the calculation.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Um, if you turn to pages thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, and forty-two of the PUD document, there's some calculations in there that'll, that'll back up what we've had to say thus far. Um, item two, the PUD notes, "The building height for a residential housing unit exceeds the fifty-foot maximum allowed. Proposed height is sixty feet." Um, staff was recommending we further evaluate this. So we really hearken back to the response that we had in regards to London Dairy zoning, item, comment number seven, where we clarify what we mean by building height. Um, if we're comfortable with what we're calling building height, then there is no concern with item two, that essentially goes away.
The only thing, though, is you'd need to make sure that your building height is in conformance with the IBC, International Building Code. We're not arbitrarily calling your building?
I sure hope our architects saw that far ahead. I see some nodding heads. Yeah, I think we're, but duly noted. Yes, sir.
Architects, engineers, I know.
As far as engineers getting along with architects, this has been great.
It's like oil and water, you know?
Every once in a while, I find a good one. Um, the next item, "The PUD did not include information to demonstrate the project would meet the performance standards noted in LZO five one six." Um, and staff had recommended to have a discussion here. Um, we, we thought the PUD was submitted in strict compliance with section five point two, uh, planned unit development of the zoning ordinance. Um, LZ zero five one six is not a part of that, but we're happy to provide answers to all of those questions. Um, this is a little long-winded, so I'll try and be quick with my tone, uh, our temperament here. Uh, five sixteen one relative to vibration. Uh, "The industrial building will not produce vibration that will be transmitted through the ground and is discernible without the aid of instruments at any point beyond the lot line. The industrial buildings are involved in producing optical and electrical devices. Such manufacturing requires low noise and low vibration environment to facilitate precise optical alignments, um, and delicate optical and electric assembly." Should be noted that the work is similar to that being done by Insight Technology, which is now L three Harris on adjacent properties. Um, five sixteen two, which is in regards to noise, "The industrial and commercial facilities will not produce any noise greater than the seventy-five deciles of the property lines. All employees driving vehicles onto the property and all trucks servicing the property will be required to have suitable mufflers so as to not to be objectionable due to intermittent beat frequencies or shrillness. There is no rail service to the property." Air pollution. Um, I think this is, this is an important element too, because we do have a farm in close proximity and we wanna make sure that we're upholding all of their elements of their, their facility. Um, visible emissions. There will be, uh, there will not be any visible discharges into the atmosphere from any source of air pollution, period. The industrial facilities are engaged in development, protect, production and support of electrical and optical systems. Such activities do not involve any process that generate visible discharge." Uh, subitem B, smoke and air contaminants, "The industrial facilities will be engaged in the development, production and support of optical and electrical equipment. Such operations are non-polluting. Like Insight Technology, now L three Harris, the industrial facilities will be occupied by Invision Technology, um, and OnPoint Systems. It will not be polluting." Um, there are subitems one, two, three, four, and five. Um, it's not anticipated that smoke will be discharged from any of the industrial facilities. In the event any smoke is discharged, it would be limited to a maximum of two Wrangellman for periods totaling four minutes in thirty-second, or thirty minutes, period. Uh, no Wrangellman of period totaling three in any fifteen minutes when starting a new fire. Um, there's some more analytical information there that I'll admit is above me, but we'll be happy to review that with staff to make sure that's consistent with all expectations. Um, "The industrial and commercial facilities shall not emit any dust, dirt, or fly ash. There will not be any emission of, of an air contaminant from an manufacturing process or its equipment. When the emanated, uh, contaminant, as measured in the flu, contains sulfur dioxide, more two thousand parts per million. There will be no construction, reconstruction, installation, or subsequent alteration of incinerators." And then five, material handling. "No person will cause or commit any materials to be handled, transported, or stored in a manner which allows or may allow particulate matter to become airborne. The residential buildings will be all electric, with electricity provided by solar parents on the roofs and local utility company. The industrial buildings are all used for clean manufacturing, uh, customer product testing, and customer service, uh, again, like the Insight Technology, now L three Harris building on the adjacent property. No smoke or other emissions will be discharged from these buildings." Waste from the buildings consists largely of paper, non-recyclable packaging material, and refuse form, uh, from employee lunch and breaks that goes into a dumpster. Uh, the dumpsters are removed by a waste company, so similar to any other business use we would have. Um, we'll have the opportunity to review these with staff, but wanted to make sure that, uh, it was at least acknowledged that, uh, we had thought ahead and made sure we looked at those items in addition. There are some comments now on PUD approach for consideration. So this, this really gets into other comments at this point, right?
Yeah, I was just gonna suggest, um, the, the comments that Nick is referring to were third-party related comments.
Yeah.
Those may change based on the board's feedback.
Yep.
And the initial, additional information provided by the applicant.
Yep.
So now may be a good time for the board to, to, to move to the public, should you, should you choose.
Absolutely.
Can I go back to one?
Yep.
So under London Dairy Site Plan Regulations, number four, three oh nine, Vehicle Circulation, Parking and Loading Standards?
Yes, sir.
So we have had issues, um, in the past concerning, and, and you all are gonna have some tall buildings with our fire department, circulation of their extremely, in fact, coming into this facility, you're gonna get our largest fire vehicle, the longest, the widest. And Mr. Chair, could you help me with the, with the, with the website?
Yeah, if you?
Buy a truck thing, whatever it is.
If you go on to, uh, the fire department's website, they have a, in their drop-down menu, they, I'm sure you're well aware of it, they have, they have what their truck is, so you can do your study based off of that.
So we've already conducted the turning radius studies required for that vehicle to show that, um, the roads work for that purpose.
Thank you.
Um, in this case, our outer roads are wider than our inner roads and then also, that's also a, a traffic calming mechanism, so we don't have people whipping around. So twenty-eight on the out, outer rim roads to provide that necessary circulation and then twenty-four along the interiors. And then again, also showing that, the, the fire truck has the ability to make all those necessary turning movements.
Great. Thank you for that clarification. Thank you.
So I wanna go to staff. I know we've talked back and forth, see if they have anything they'd like to add. We'll come to the board and then we'll open it up to the public. John?
Yeah, I think, uh, I'd like to have a better opportunity to, to look at Nick's revisions.
Yep.
Allow him some opportunity to, to put some tables together so that the, the board can understand what he's asking for. I get it, but I get a little clearer now than I did last week.
Sure.
Be dead honest with you all, so.
Sure.
That's all I have for now.
Great, there. Thank you. Kelly?
I would agree. I think we're in a better position to review this and provide formal recommendations at the next meeting.
Sure.
Fantastic. And I'll go through the board. I'll start with Sean. You have anything?
No.
Roger?
I'm good.
Uh, only question I have is, you mentioned that there's gonna be sidewalks. Is there, and I noticed in your PUD, uh, document, you mentioned access to the rail trail as a positive. Are you going, do you plan on having a sidewalk all the way down Kitty Hawk Road or?
No, so the, the intent there was to identify it as an amenity, similar to the other business uses that are in proximity. You have the ability to walk, to ride your bike, to otherwise get to that rail trail. Um, it is very close for us, so we thought it appropriate to point out that our residents will have ease, ease of access to that, either walking or riding a bike, but there's no formal off-site improvements.
Based off their proximity to the rail trail itself.
Yep.
You good, Jason?
Thank you.
Yep? No, I, I'm also Mr. Chair. Mr. Rug?
Okay, I get several things. Uh, let's see. Section two point three point A, um, involvement irrelevant, uh, town departments and boards. The, uh, last sentence reads, "A conceptual discussion was also held with a chairperson of the planning board that led to further enhancements to this PUD document." Uh, there was not a discussion with the chair. It was the full board. And that meeting was on the, uh, twelfth of April, twenty twenty-three. So it was about a year ago.
We've been working hard for some time on this.
So, so you may, may make the correction on that.
So you're just, just looking for clarification in that, that it was with the board, not the chair?
Correct. And let's see, two traffic mitigation, uh, questions. The traffic import, uh, impact and access study that's mentioned in two point eight point B, point ten, and also in section two point nine point B, point nine, uh, summary of proposal, traffic impact, the traffic impact study. Are those the same study or are they two different studies?
Singular study.
There's one study?
Was one traffic impact and access study performed for this project.
And when is that gonna be available?
Is currently submitted, pending review?
Correct. It's under review and it's, as I mentioned, we need to have an understanding of what the master plan regulatory document is going to consist of, so that we can review the traffic accordingly.
Yeah. Yeah, you need a full understanding of what? Back, back to number, number of units of housing, if we say yes to the four thirty-nine or we saying, you know, well, that, that's gonna drastically change what the traffic study would be, so I think we're waiting.
We're gonna be looking at the impacts, uh, Kiraway, uh, Harvey Road, uh, Kitty Hawk Landing, Grunierfield Road, uh, Grunierfield, Page Road, the intersection with Mammoth Road. There's law and traffic complaints and accidents at that intersection and also the traffic light at Rockingham Road. So those are all gonna be impacted. We need to have at least a, a feel of what you're gonna be generating for, for traffic. I know each site plan subdivision that you'd be submitting, those will go through the same process also. So the initial, uh, site plan will have, uh, basically the ground level and then each additional plan from there adds to it, so the study will have to be done to see what the impacts are, so.
So I'll, I'll for a clarification that we've done this a little bit different. Um, we've done a full traffic impacted study for the entire development because we know what our uses are. Now, may they modify, they may be modified a little bit here or there as we go through the site plan approval process, and if there's a significant deviation, we would update it. Um, but the intent was to provide the opportunity to know what those impacts would be and then as we move towards the site plan approval process to verify them. So what this does with the traffic study that's prepared is it provides the framework, much like the PUD provides the framework for all these other ordinances. It allows us and allows ideally the board and the community to have a comfort level with what's being proposed, that there isn't some dramatic off-site improvement or otherwise that needs to be, uh, constructed. Gives the staff the opportunity to review and verify that. Now, the traffic study may not be fully approved, but it would allow the board the opportunity to approve the PUD, knowing that that traffic study is then gonna be reviewed subsequently at each site plan amendment.
That's what we need to know. It's just, you know, like a general overview of what's gonna happen at the beginning and then each plan will, you know, will have the details to it.
So similar to another PUD that is very local, that's what they had done initially, was an overall traffic analysis.
They, they, they did a huge traffic analysis, involved a, a bigger area.
Lot, lot bigger project. You're right.
Absolutely, so.
And I'm sure you read, read the, the traffic section on?
I enjoyed that, that time reading thoroughly. It's a long doc.
So again, yeah, so in that big overall traffic study, as each of those components came in, what was the impact? So as Nick has indicated, and that's, that's ea- that's the best way to, to look at traffic. You have to look at it as, as a whole, not just each piece, because as Nick says, when we first sat down, what's gonna come first? We don't, we don't really know. You know, as time progresses here, we're gonna have a better understanding. They'll be able to take pieces out of the traffic report and replug and chug the numbers.
It's like putting the building blocks in place.
Correct. So maybe initially, there is not an impact to, to one, one or two of these intersections, but it's, and it also allows them to plan accordingly too, so that they can plan for their off-site improvements.
Okay.
So that's how it's, that's where we're at with it.
Next question is, what, what role does the public transit, uh, playing with, uh, your, your, your project, your PUD?
I think that's one of the items that needs a little bit more consideration. Um, the intent is to provide, uh, an enclosure for a school bus pickup and drop-off at the end of Kiraway, um, as part of the, the future development of this site, but whether or not it would be a formal, um, bus stop. I, I guess we haven't gotten that far. It's something we can talk about.
You might wanna just reach out to MTA because they have, they did one dick on, uh, Innovation Way.
Okay.
I think you, you, you need to talk with them, uh, you know, with their plans are also. And then the other thing is, uh, a discussion with Southern Hampshire Planning Commission. I think Kelly's gonna be handling that with the, uh, you know, impact determinations, but it, it's into what, uh, Woodmont is. It's a, it's an impact. Southern Hampshire would wanna have input on it. Not that we might agree with everything they say, but we need to review it, so.
Yep.
Lynn?
Nothing else, Mr. Chair.
Mr. D?
I'm all set, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Ann?
All set tonight.
All set tonight? I will, uh, I'll open it up to the public. Does anybody have any comments, questions, concerns?
Good evening. Uh, my name's Dave Robbins. Live at five thirty-two Mammoth Road.
Thank you.
Um, between Grunierfield and Mammoth, uh, and, um, Rockingham, you know, the part of town called the Village. So, a couple of questions, uh, some real concerns about, about this type of development. I think the live-work-play philosophy is, is good in concept. However, I'm not sure that we're there. Uh, I think Henry Ford changed all that a long time ago, and if you have any question about it, get on ninety-three at six thirty in the morning. So, uh, some of the, so this four hundred and forty units is gonna create a lot of traffic. And like I said, I live on this section of Mammoth Road where Grunierfield and Page all meet, the intersection that we have all kinds of problems. And the town council had approved stop signs for us several months back. We haven't seen it yet. It's, you know, so we can't judge the impact of what those stop signs are gonna be on our road. We had a lot of speeders, traffic problems, things like that. Um, so we're growing without really addressing the surrounding infrastructure issues. For instance, today, when I work, I've worked on Technology Drive for twenty years. I left Technology Drive, went to the airport. When I went, I went down Pettingill Road. It was backed all the way up from the light where New Balance is being built, all the way back to Industrial Drive. So we keep, everyone's doing their traffic studies and it's almost like each traffic study is autonomous. And they're building and building and building and we're creating all these problems on roads that aren't really made for it. Um, so I caution just from an overall infrastructure within the town. Um, my other concern is going to be with London Dairy Fire. We have eight or nine buildings here, all fifty feet high, four stories. Is North Station adequately staffed to fight a? Is North Station adequately staffed to fight a residence fire in that area? The latter, I think, is coming out of Central, right? So if you got, it's different to evacuate people from a fourth story than evacuate an industrial building, which is what we're doing now, because there's nothing else up there like this, right? So we're dropping this PUD in the middle of a commercial industrial area adjacent to the airport. So it's going to be an island up there, right? You know, will fire need another ambulance in North? What's it going to do to our battalion strength? We just got to battalion strength, right? I mean, we all know the finance problems we're having because we ran six short. So these are all things I'm thinking of. We brought up North School. What's the impact on North School? You know, these are, these aren't, these aren't issues that we're going to correct in short order. You know, look what, you know, we just, what we did down at the school, we didn't approve all day kindergarten or building out, you know, the additional rooms to get rid of our modules. So, you know, London Dairy is a great town, and we need to grow, but I think we need to do smart growth. I'm concerned about where this particular type of development is placed. I think it has potential to fail, which would be really bad for us. I'm going to climb out a little bit on a limb here. I'm going to, given the topography of this land and having walked the hill up to insight, we've already said that, you know, that there's a big downslope, 120 feet over this 100 acres. I'm going to say probably that land isn't conducive to much larger buildings. And if you look at the way everything's laid out, now, I know we talked about density briefly, and the calculation for density in a 100-foot track. And we said there's no subdivision in there, but there are two clear areas here. You've got a commercial area, you've got a residential area. And I think we're making it dense because we're putting all the residences in the shoehorn, because the land really doesn't work for spreading things out more. So it's almost like we're forcing it. So I would caution approval of this plant in that area until other things are addressed. Because I don't, I'm not quite sure we're ready to throw, you know, 1,000 residences up on that hill in the north end of town. Thank you. I appreciate your consideration.
Your name was again, sir?
Dave Robbins.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Ray Vercel, 3 Gary Drive. The initial concept here of what they're proposing is a great idea. However, the location is of concern. This is on top of a hill, and if anybody's been up there, there's a lot of rock that's been blasted out of there in the past. And I'm sure there's plenty of ledge up there now, which is going to require further potential blasting. I don't know what's in the ground, but it's a good chance. And we're talking about a stormwater runoff. We're talking about access to emergency vehicles. We're talking about traffic problems that we already have up there in that area. And we're talking about FedEx, UPS. All of those trucks are going to be potentially driving up there on a daily basis to supply not only the businesses, but also to supply the residents in those buildings. Everybody owns stuff online today, and this is a concern. And my concern primarily really is about stormwater runoff. We're talking about a hill, probably over 100 feet high, 100 acres. And the runoff is going to eventually, there's a brook that runs down off the hill, by the way, and that runs into Coas Brook. Where does Coas Brook go? It goes to the Merrimack River. We've got a problem right now with water contamination. We've got a situation where we just passed a, we passed something for $100,000 to make sure that we're in compliance with MS4. That's about stormwater runoff. And by the way, the EPA just said they're dropping it to four parts per trillion for PFOA and PFAS. We have some serious concerns in this town that we have to address. And we're looking at approving some of these things. When we, we're behind, and we've got to play catch-up here. We've got to bring in municipal water, we've got to deal with, we've got to bring in sewer. We have a problem with traffic. And we're moving ahead on some of these projects, which basically are a great idea in the right place. But we've got to put a lot of thought in before we make final approval on some of these things, I would suggest. I think if, anybody got any questions?
Thank you, Ray.
No questions, okay.
Mr. Chair, a question for the developers.
Sure.
So you will have town water, city water from Merrimack or from Manchester Water Works as well as town sewer? About that site?
Yes, sir.
Great, thanks.
Anyone else from the public?
I've got another question.
Come on back, Ray. There's one more right behind you, so make it quick.
Abutters are important too, by the way.
There's an abutter right behind you.
I know, I know, I know. Okay, so, no, my question is this, in regards to this housing. Is this housing just going to be for the people that are going to be working in these businesses? Or, and what is this housing? Is it high-end housing? Is it low-end housing? Or is it, it's just simply for the people that are working up in this village?
I believe you guys talked about this at the conceptual meeting.
Yes.
And that it is going to be.
It's all market rate housing.
It's all on the market, no?
Correct, and it's primarily to service our employees, but we're making it available to the other employers that are in the general area.
So, so could anybody apply to live there?
So theoretically, theoretically, Ray could go rent an apartment there.
If I wanted to.
Theoretically, yes, Ray.
Theoretically, okay.
It would have to have clean water.
That's a pretty vague answer, but that's okay. That's okay.
City water is a start. If Ray's going to live there, it's got to be clean water.
I couldn't afford to live there.
So is there any plan for preference to the people who work there, or is it completely equal availability?
Well, preference is pretty much prepared, Mr. Farber, by the, by insight, that envision, because primarily we're going to be providing housing as part of our employment packages in order to hire the people that we need, so the preference would naturally go to those employees first.
Okay, thank you.
Interesting, thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Bob?
Hi. Bob Merrill, 569 Mammoth Road. My family abuts London Dairy Holdings. I personally don't, but other members of my family do. I was looking at the town master plan, the last one that was completed, and you read page 39, and it basically says, an industrial park is where people go, they go either, you know, to work, pick up in a product, deliver products, and they leave. And it's basically not a conducive place for people to live or otherwise spend time there. This is page 39 on the bottom left-hand side, and it describes various types of retail, I mean, various types of developments in town, in like, it's page 38, you know, strip, retail mall, big buy, retail, and various that. And industrial are very, other than for, you know, unless you're working there or you're there for a specific usage, you know, reason, it'd be a place you don't go. And you get to look at the traffic, because you're already getting into failed roads, particularly down with Litchfield and High Range. And, oh, trying to think, the other road comes into it. And basically, the Page Road, Grunier Field, Mammoth, and you've got other places where the road is basically getting to the point of saturation. Particularly since the airport access road has been put into place. And so, I really think that the height should be maintained at no higher than 35 feet. And that basically probably would mean, instead of four-story high, you could probably only go three-story high on the apartment buildings. And I think the town really needs to maintain it for safety, potentially fire safety. If a, is going to be a wooden, wood structure buildings, you might consider if they're going to be steel and concrete frame-type buildings. So, it's just something that's coming to my, coming up to my head. I was looking at the various maps, and I'm finding that the letter lane, this is between Kitty Hawk and the Keyaway. This is a highlight, yeah, hilltop in there. It's, there's a little lot right there. I got the number, 29-29-7. It has been listed as a lot, a town own for a number of years in the town report. And I looked at it this year, and it was not listed as a town-owned lot. It's just a small lot. I think the town needed to clarify, does the town own it, or does someone else own it? I believe that the town took it for non-payment of taxes many years ago. And that needs to be clarified, because the, someone should not be claiming private property. It's actually the town property.
What was that number again, Mr. Merrill?
Okay, 29-29-7.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, it's just basically a little wedge between one lane and Grunier Field Road. And it basically services one house and ends at Leonard Lane. And I noticed that Leonard Lane had been, what had been reclassified and went a road on a small path right there at the end, right there where the, where it starts there, Grunier Field Road. I think we need to clarify that. I think Leonard Lane might be an exit, an emergency access point into the residential development, even if gated by the fire department, as a third potential access point. If it doesn't open up as a, you know, as a filled road. Let's see, there must be other things on my mind, but I don't remember them right now.
I'll write them all down for us.
Yeah, I made a list, some of the list, and I picked a piece of paper, or the wrong piece of paper. Oh, on 17-2, there's a stone carport up there. And I think that should be, the Heritage Commission should take a look at that. As a potential, something that should be saved, you know, probably, a hand-built stone carport up there. I have not seen it, but I've been talking about it. So that's something else to take into consideration. But I think really, we need to keep the height of those buildings down, so we don't create problems. And the, I think the real concern is, do we really want to have an industrial, do we really want to have a residential, a large residential area in the middle of an industrial park? You know, I essentially live in an industrial park right now, as it is. I got Fort, Fort and Industrial Park Drive Street, and it has a number of, you know, industrial-type businesses, trucking terminals, bus depot, and various other businesses in there. You've got workplace systems, you've got the lubricant place where the old FedEx place, it used to be, you know, terminal on the other side of me. So it's just a question of noise, sight, smell, and industrial contaminations already in the area. You've got the airport, you've got other trucking terminals, and so, is this really the spot for an commercial, I mean, for a residential area? When you start blasting on that hill, it carries for quite ways. It's been already blasted down where the school office is now, and others, you know, on that area. And you already, you have natural springs coming up through the ledge, and it has treated wetlands up there. Now, when you start in blast, and you may either create a gusher of water, or you could block them up, so it could change the flow of the water up there on the hill. So that's something to take into consideration. You just don't know when you start blasting, what you're going to do to unturn of the flow of the water coming there. You're going to block up a natural seater, or are you just going to open it up like crazy? All right, thank you very much for your help. And is anybody on any questions?
Don't go away, don't go away, please.
Okay, sure.
So, you mentioned a 35-foot height.
Yeah.
On the buildings.
On the.
Where did that number come from?
In the town regulations, it says no structure can be more than 35 feet in the residential structure.
Thank you.
And to get.
Is that for residential zone, or multifamily too, also? Because this is multifamily.
I'd have to double check.
Okay.
Most of that area is zone industrial, but there is an area on the very east of the London Dairy Holden land is zone residential.
Yeah, so when they do, if this gets approved, the PUD will be an overarching.
Yeah.
Zone, so it will have its own rules and regulations. Depending on all, many of the things we talked about tonight, and some things that we didn't talk about tonight, might come to the light in the next meeting that we have on this. Because I'm going to guess that there's going to be not a lot of decisions made tonight. So, so I appreciate your comments. And we'll see what happens next. But that gives you time to find that piece of paper you're missing with all your questions on it, too.
Yeah, yeah. I think I've got most of them, but there's still probably one or two.
Yeah.
And I'll probably think of some more as I come along.
That's all right. We appreciate it.
Personally, I would, personally, my opinion on this, on the 100-acre PUD that should be repealed, but obviously the Woodmont and this project are already grandfathered in, but I'd recommend the town repeal the 100-acre PUDs for the future. But that's another discussion for another night, I presume.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, it is for multifamily, building height shall not exceed 50 feet. Excuse me.
In a multifamily.
In multifamily.
So in this, so this is multifamily, 50 feet is more appropriate than 35, yes? As far as.
You could interpret it that way, yes?
Thank you.
Can I ask a question now?
Sure.
Thank you. On page 39 of your document, under 2.9. B. 4, I remember reading in this, and now I found it again. So, under Village Area 3, it mentions, "Additional complementary uses are identified for potential future use and may include a machine shop business, injection molding." and may include a machine shop business, injection molding business, and an electric, electronic circuit board assembly business. Um, um, supporting uses may also consist of research and development laboratories and professional office space. What area of this project would, um, a machine shop injection molding business and electronic circuit board assembly business go? Because I'm worried about anything, any toxic substances that might be used in, in processes there.
So it would be located in that northerlymost structure, the twenty thousand square feet of manufacturing that we had previously discussed, which is a little bit of an open-ended as to what will be used for. So when we look at the graphic, it's centrally located in the uppermost portion. But even regardless of those uses, um, the other elements that we've discussed tonight would still hold true. Talking about vibrations, emissions or otherwise, that's universal to all of our uses. So understood that that element is in there. The idea was to provide just an elaboration on what some of those uses may be. But, and also to provide the corollary to our other uses that are already proposed, that these are essentially sister uses so that instead of someone having to drive to these multiple locations to try and ascertain all these different elements, you can get them all in one spot. So again, we're taking, uh, trips off the road.
So they would support what's being proposed elsewhere?
Correct, sir.
I remember when I was younger, I worked at an injection molding factory at the airport, right by the old terminal. So, uh, thanks to that, thanks.
I'm gonna let it, but we'll let it, I didn't expect that to go so long. We'll let the public finish up and then we'll come back to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Uh, my name's Kevin Smith, Six King Philip Drive. And as Dick mentioned, I've been, uh, working on this project as a consultant with them. Appreciate all the comments by the board members and the public as well this evening. Uh, just a couple of points I wanted to make that I thought were worth noting. I think a comment came up during the conceptual discussion last year about, uh, the synergy of potential airport noise and, and, uh, residential units being in that area. Um, the airport director Ted Kitchens has endorsed this project, uh, looks upon it very favorably for a number of reasons and, uh, provided a letter for such, which I believe we have in our package, um, which we can, uh, give to the board to, uh, to review. Um, the question about providing public transportation and speaking with the owner, uh, Ken and Grace Solinsky, I know it's their intention to wanna provide MTA service to that area. And so we'll get you, uh, clarification on that and, and a definitive answer, um, when we next meet. And then with regard to traffic mitigation, um, you know, I, I have to credit John and the staff because I know they've been working with DOT and looking at this area, especially the Pettingill Road area in totality of a number of these projects that are all coming in that area, um, with the, uh, plan to widen that roadway. And I know they've got a plan, uh, with DOT that they've been working on. And I think, um, sooner than later, uh, that'll be presented to the board. But I thought that was worth noting because I, I know that staff doesn't look at each of these projects just in a vacuum, that they do look at them all together and say, "We've gotta figure out how we're going to mitigate the traffic with all of these different projects coming in." Um, and I think when you, after the traffic analysis has been reviewed by staff and you all get a chance to look at it, I think you'll see too that a lot of this traffic from this is projected to go, uh, north on Harvey Road, uh, to Manchester, South Willa Street, two ninety-three, and, and, uh, back that way as well. So, again, coming attractions, uh, but I just wanted to, uh, say thank you again and, um, we'll see you soon.
Thank you. Anything else from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to them.
You have three letters?
Oh, yeah, that's right. I have-
You have two and I have one.
Okay, perfect. I have two letters I will read. Uh, do you wanna give me that one? I'll read it.
Yeah, I'll read it for you.
Perfect. You wanna read these? Um, first one's from Envision Technology. Uh, Dear Planning Board, Envision Technology LLC is a company which designs and manufactures electro-optical systems for the US government. This includes the development and production of systems for multiple agencies within the US Department of Defense, which are rated and certified for national defense use under the provisions of the Defense Priorities and Allocation Systems, DPAS. DPAS is used by the government to prioritize national defense-related contracts and orders throughout the US supply chain. Envision has ongoing contracts with the rating of both DOA-a-seven and DO-c-nine and anticipates future orders within the same rating in the future. Within the past four and a half years, Envision, Envision has grown from a single employee to having nearly fifty employees supporting these important projects. With our ongoing work and continued growth trajectory, it is important that Envision continues to possess facilities which are sufficient for the company to perform its work for these vitally important customers. Due to its continued growth, Envision will exceed its existing facility capacity within the next two years, which will begin to limit its ability to develop and produce crucial systems and equipment for the government. Therefore, it is a matter of urgency that Envision moves into its new facility as soon as possible so that it can meet its important obligations as part of the defense industrial base. Accordingly, I support Envision's plan to expand its operation as part of the proposed village on Technology Hill in the town of Londonary as expeditiously as possible. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact, contact me. Sincerely, Mark Belandrea. Now, I have another one here. Dear Planning Board, Envision Technology LLC is a company which designs and manufactures electrical optical systems for the US government. This includes the development of systems for the US Army, which are rated and certified for the national defense use under provisions of the Defense Priorities and Allocation Systems. It is important that Envision processes, possesses facilities and resources which are sufficient to the company to perform its work. Accordingly, I support Envision's plan to expand its operations as part of the proposed village on Technology Hill in the town of Londonary. Sincerely, John Nettleton, Project Leader of Lasers for Research and Technology Integration Directorate, Devcom C five, there's a lot of words after that, I don't know, I'm not gonna say it. You guys got the hint. Kelly?
The one I have is from the Tebow Corporation located at six zero three Mammoth Road in Londonary. Dear members of the Butterton Leonardry Holdings LLC Planning and Development, we are writing to state that we strongly support this application and wish to have this letter of support added to the record for the, of the hearing. Innovative planning such as this project is vital to the economic success of the community. Again, we strongly encourage this application.
Thank you. So at this time, I'll bring it back to the board. Does anybody have anything else they wanna add? Lynn, I think you had something.
Lynn? So I did have one question, uh, in terms of this process. When does the fire department get involved in, in looking at building height? Building height's been a topic of discussion. I think we won't do anything without their approval for building height. And same with road access and turning radiuses and, and things like that. I suspect they'll do a thorough review.
Correct. All the departments, including fire, are involved at this stage. Um, but we will be continuing to work with, with fire, for example, to get, um, their specific comments to the building height and, and the other concerns raised by the board this evening.
Mr. Dick? I have a couple of things that Mr. Smith, uh, touched on. Uh, the Pettingill Road widening, um, has come up several times in the past six months or so. Is that something that's in the queue or out of the queue or almost being thought about? Or do we know what's, what's-
So what, what we're doing, as Kevin indicated, Tony, is again, so the, the staff, we have been looking at everything that's developable out there. So right now, um, we've got quite a few jobs, projects in the queue. We have the hospital, we have New Balance, we have Tesla, we have the high cube, excuse me, two high cube facilities. We have a warehouse at the end of Plainview. So those, with those six, we've come up with a plan and we're, we're meeting with DOT to, to, I'm gonna simplify it, we're gonna open up the cabinets and, and turn the knobs to, to see what we can do with the, the, the timing of the lights. So our full build-out though, is we're looking at, and unfortunately, again, uh, Technology Hill wasn't in the queue. We had to, we had to strike a line in the sand and say, "We gotta do something." So again, in full build-out, Technology Hill will be in, in this next phase of it. So with that next phase, we're looking at as far as what needs to be done for expansion of the widening of Pettingill Road and how that all impacts everything.
So if you, if you were gonna guess, would you say that's five years out, twenty-five years out, two years out?
The way the development has been going, I think it's gonna be quicker.
So next week?
Uh, no. A week after.
Yesterday.
Thank you.
No.
No, I, I understand and I, and I appreciate that, the help on that timeline, thank you.
Essentially, we've, we've evaluated, we've been evaluating traffic. We've, we've been made aware of the significant development in this particular area. And we've essentially developed a phasing plan that is being prepared to be implemented at this point.
Thank you. That needed to be asked and answered for the, for the video. Um, so, uh, you know, there's a lot of talk about, uh, density and whether industrial and residential should be combined. And my opinion may or may not be different if this was plopping into a neighborhood. This is going into an island where a developer slash owner is built, basically building a compound. Right? In my day, we called it a commune, but that's a different topic. So, so the, the market will decide whether it's appropriate or not. The market will decide whether it's safe or not. The market will decide whether, whether it's the right location or not. And so, i- i- I mean, it's a nice talking point to say, "Oh, my gosh, it's gonna be dangerous and kids are gonna be maimed and killed because it's a hill and they're gonna be rolling down the hill trying to get to the bus stop." That, that's not us. That's not, that's not, in my opinion, that's not what we do. So I think that, I think that, that in a situation like this, where it's their housing and their businesses, they will, the users, will make the decision on whether it's appropriate or not. If it's unsafe, parents won't put their kids in there. Um, if it's, if, if the hill is too high for people to walk to the store, they'll, they'll go look at it and they'll say, "Yeah, this is not for me." So, so I don't think we're in, in the business of making that decision for them. It's a philosophical decision that I have, have come to, um, at this, um, stage of the game. And, um, we'll, we'll see if my mind changes before we, we get to a point where we're gonna take any votes. Thank you.
I just wanna say, well, this project isn't an island because it is surrounded by some residential folks, um, on the east side and towards the southeast. And I just wanna make them aware of, um, the type of business that's over there. It's an agricultural business. That's why I may be concerned about anything floating over or whatever. Um, and they have, uh, close tolerances with the government and what they require. Um, or even surround businesses surrounding them. So I just wanna make you aware of that. It's a, it's been a farm, the, the farmhouse was originally built in seventeen ninety-eight, I think it was. So we talk about history. Um, the Merrill Farm is one of the five starting farms in Londonary, original farms. So I just wanna make sure you're aware of that. Um, I consider this a, a, a good project for that area, but I just want you to be aware, there to the, um, east of you and the prevailing winds there are usually from the west. So that's why I'm concerned, um, about any type of issues with industrial plants. I know you'll take care of it, um, but I just want you to be aware that they're very sensitive. And the Merrills have conservation land. Um, the town has an easement on the Merrills, the large farm. And, um, Bob's brother, Kenny Merrill, just, uh, obtained a, uh, the town just obtained a conservation easement on his land, which is to the east, immediately to the east of this project. And that area, I guess, is called Merrill's Hill. So I just want you to be aware of that, why some of us are concerned about this project. Not that it'll, we'll stop it or anything like that. We just want you to be aware of the neighbors and be good, good neighbors to these people. Thank you.
Uh, we've closed public comment at this time. Anybody else?
I got, uh, just my usual spiel is, uh, work with your butters. Uh, they're what, you know, you've, you've heard some from here. Uh, I think there's, uh, at least meeting with them, trying to address what concerns could, could be done. It, it makes the problems easier at public hearing time and everything for both you and for, for us. I'm not trying to look to get out of it or anything, but it's advice we always give developers is to please work with your butters. They're the ones that can make or break the whole thing.
Anybody else?
Yeah, the road at the airport, didn't we make that wide enough for, to have two more lanes?
I believe the town holds an easement through Pettingill.
Yes, yes, I think there's supplementary designs, uh, I think when Yanis was still here, so.
So I think before we move on here, um, I do wanna say a couple of things. I think this is a very interesting development. Um, I, I do think it's in a decent location, but I think there are a lot of concerns. Um, we've heard some of that from Mr. Robbins tonight and a couple other, uh, residents of the, of, of the town of Londonary here. Um, so I, I think we have a little bit more digging to do before we make a decision on this project. Um, and I, I also feel that a, a project this size warrants its own, uh, meeting, if you will. You know, something that doesn't have more agenda items that are taking a little bit of our, our attention away from it. And I think it deserves its own meeting. Um, I think we've gotten a lot of information from you tonight. I feel as though you, you two have a lot that you still, still wanna review. Um, and, you know, we've heard it time and time again, we do get concerned about, um, what, uh, what is gonna happen to our services that we have from the town of Londonary now. Um, so I think hearing a little bit of that input, um, and, and how the fire department feels about stuff, if, if they have the appropriate apparatus up at, up at, um, Station One, um, is, is a very important part of this conversation. Um, and what their concern is to adding, potentially adding another four hundred thirty units to the north end of town. Um, again, I, I think this is a, a pretty interesting project. Um, I, I find the location itself interesting as we've talked a little bit about Old Mammoth Road. You know, that was two hundred years ago, however long ago that was made, that's exactly what they're doing today. You've had factories with housing getting built around it. And that, that's what a lot of that old community was. And, you know, kinda still is to a degree. So I think it's a very interesting, um, this project is similar to a way, to something that happened a few hundred years ago. They're, they're just looking to do it again. Um, so I think it's really interesting. I would look for a, um, I, I'd, I'd like, I'd, I'd look for a motion to continue this. I'd like to make it a special meeting. I don't know if we have any time this month, Kelly, um, in terms of Wednesday, Wednesdays, to, to hear this again. Or if you feel like you may need a little bit more time. I don't know what, what the board has for availability. Um, but I, I, I would like to say I feel that this deserves its own meeting and, and we should certainly do that.
I think knowing what time the staff needs to get things together is probably the first thing to, uh,
Correct.
To, uh, know, but, uh, our scheduled meetings are the first of May and then the, um, eighth of May.
Eighth of May.
I don't know how much we, I think there's, uh, Plainview, I think is on for the eighth, uh, for the continuity. And then the ninety-six unit, multi-family on Gilchrist is, uh, on there.
Our, our scheduled May meetings are, um, pretty full.
I would assume, given, given the time of year, that we're, we're in our long meeting nights.
Well, but I, I thought you were talking about a, a separate meeting.
Yeah, I would, I would like a separate meeting that is its own agenda item. So if we have something on, I think, what's, the twenty-fourth or the twenty-fifth is two weeks from now, that gives, should give you guys some, some time to look at stuff.
This isn't my only project, Jake. I'll tell you that much. You understand that?
Yep, I get that.
There you go, thank you.
Kelly?
I can accommodate the twenty-fourth, but we need,
Sure.
You know, I, I'll say, I can accommodate the twenty-fourth, but I wouldn't, uh, be able to speak on the other department's ability, for example, the fire department, to give you what you're asking for at that meeting.
Okay.
But if you wanted to hold a hearing and continue to work through some of these other items,
Absolutely.
that's up to the board.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just kind of reading what Kelly and John just said and getting enough information, I, I think it makes sense to have that special meeting in May. At the earliest, I, I don't think-
I'm open for anything, as long as it's its own meeting.
Because if we're in a position on the tw- if we rush it to the April twenty-fifth, and we're still in a position of, like,
Yeah, we, and-
We need some more information.
So, um-
Well, the problem is you put, well, you're pushing the applicant another month.
Yeah.
More than a month, because then that puts it on the fifteenth, if you wanna have a special meeting, 'cause we're already full on the first and the eighth, you said?
We're pretty full, I mean, we can, if you wanna continue it to either of those meetings, we can do that, I'm just, we are, we have-
Or another, another day of the week.
I, I would do another day of the week, I, I don't wanna push anything that's going to be up at the next meetings.
I can tell you this.
Yeah.
If we're talking about May at this point, if you need time, I can, we also have to coordinate with the applicant, we can propose a couple of dates, and then I'll, we'll go through the entire legal noticing process again, including a butters, so in other words-
How much time do you need for the legal notices? Ten days, fifteen?
Ten days is a requirement, but, um, I have enough time to get something out by, towards the end of this month, to properly notice a May meeting.
Okay.
Can we ask the applicant right now?
Sure.
Do, do you guys have a preference? You, you wanna have another public hearing tomorrow, or?
Actually, I'd like to hear you moving into May as well, there's a small time to work with Kelly and John.
So does May fifteenth work for you? That's the Wednesday?
There's a ZBA hearing.
Okay. Never mind, never mind.
How about the, the, this room?
We can get off on the Wednesday, yeah, what's an availability?
The fourteenth?
In May.
odds come. Is it here?
Thirteenth is a town council meeting.
All right, then how about the seventh?
The seventh, uh, honestly, I'd have, you know what?
Utilities committee on the seventh.
What day of the week's, uh?
Check 'em out.
Seventh.
Uh, Woodmont, we met several Fridays, so that's, Friday's not out of the question.
Got utilities?
Utilities committee meeting on Tuesday, the seventh.
Thursday?
The twenty-second is the, the next weekday available, with no meetings, no-
Twenty-second of-
Of May.
May? We wanna do that?
That's a Wednesday.
That's a Wednesday.
That's, that's pretty far.
That's pushing it, yeah. Is there anything not on a Wednesday?
There's.
We could have it on the-
Saturday the eleventh.
High school half cafeteria.
Yeah, that's an idea.
Yep.
So-
So, there we go, now, I've, I've been trying to find a, a, a calendar, I finally got one here.
What's Monday the twenty-ninth look like? Of April?
Uh, the twenty-ninth and the thirtieth are both open.
Town Hall closed all day, is that a holiday?
April twenty-ninth.
And didn't Kelly just say she needs until the end of the month to-
April twenty-ninth?
Yeah. Yeah, I think-
That too soon?
I think, uh, May is quite preferable, early May.
Yes.
We'll work with you. Yeah? So Monday, May-
Kelly, Kelly, didn't you just say?
You want May?
Yeah.
Kelly, didn't you just say you kinda need until the end of the month to get the butters?
I don't think we should be looking at April.
Yeah, can we just focus on May?
Real quick, Monday, May sixth, Lunedary Housing and Redevelopment Authority meeting, which is in the Sunny Crest Room.
Yep.
This is the Moose Hill Room, right?
Mm-hmm.
So this room would be open, so could we do Monday the sixth?
There's no town council meeting?
Nope, nope, nothing on the calendar.
I won't have an engineer that day.
Yeah, we may not have all the comments backed either.
You can't do it, Nick?
I have another meeting that night already, I apologize.
Oh. Monday, the thirteenth, it's the recreation commission.
During the regular meeting.
They meet across the hall.
Yeah, they're in another room, so.
So Monday, the thirteenth?
There's no council meetings on here, when do the council meet?
The council's the sixth and the twentieth in May.
Okay, can we do the thirteenth?
Thirteenth?
They meet across the hall.
So thirteenth, thirteenth? Thirteenth?
I just wanna be-
I'm in North Carolina.
John's not here.
We don't need you anyway.
Go for it.
But I just wanna be clear, we will still be noticing this.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, so you don't, you don't have to give your official notice.
All right, so then do we wanna leave it up in the air for now, and you'll let us know?
I would recommend that, just so I have some time to-
Okay.
But, I, just so you can put it as a placeholder.
You got May nine, you got May sixteen.
I probably won't be here on the thirteenth.
Put it ten to, to the first weekend.
May nine and May sixteenth as well.
Uh, yeah, it would be open to that, and we get the eighth as planning board, and then do ninth planning board.
Do the ninth.
So, either way, we'll leave that up to you, you know, a couple of dates that are in mind are the ninth and the thirteenth.
The eighth and the ninth would be better for me, I'm out the thirteenth.
Which you will send out a nice email, making sure people are available.
You made my comments, all right.
Fantastic.
Might have some more, Tony.
All right, so, I, I'm looking for a motion.
We need a motion.
Please.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that, uh, we recommend continuing this application until-
To be determined.
Until TBD, you know, about middle of May, to allow the applicant and staff additional time to clarify the waiver and modification requests.
You got a second?
I have a second.
Second for Jason?
Jason, give it to Jason.
Uh, Mr. Solinsky, you're the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Uh, yeah, I'll entertain it.
Envision Technology and One Point Systems have both doubled in funding last year. We need to get into this space, and we need to do it quickly. We need to do it very on point, it's a consumer product, you could argue it's just employment in the state. Envision Technology is doing stuff that's vital to the national defense. We need to get into space. We've got the people here, I'd ask that you pick a date while we're sitting here, and everybody's here and can comment, rather than trying to do it by endless emails and text messages and calls, just pick a date.
Thursday, the ninth.
Yep.
So can we amend your motion, sir?
I'd like to amend my motion to make the meeting on Thursday, May ninth.